Imagine running like, I feel like that last quarter mile.
How about that one guy that was running this thing for forty-five years and got blown over by the bomb, got up and ran the rest of the way?
I thought maybe you got hit with some shards or something.
He said he just felt pretty frail.
Wrong guy.
Well, how old was he?
We have been for thirty seconds, but...
Seventy-eight, okay.
All right, welcome everybody to the April seventeenth edition of Litchfield School Board. Start off with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any revisions to the agenda?
Um, I don't think so. Laurie is here to talk about the schedule proposal for next year and also a little later, uh, ch-ch-ch, uh, talk about, I think, I can talk about the co and extracurricular program review. So I think we're good. Because Laurie can either stay or she wants to go after that. All right, so I think we're in good shape.
Okay. Summary of non-public actions from the April third, two thousand thirteen, non-public session. Mr. Miller made a motion to approve the March twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen, non-public minutes as written. Mr. York seconded. The motion carried five zero zero. Mr. Miller made a motion to accept the nomination of Frank Markowitz as business administrator for Litchfield School District at a salary of eighty-eight thousand five hundred. For two thousand thirteen to two thousand fourteen, Mr. York seconded. The motion carried five zero zero. Presentations and recognitions. Enter. Presentations and recognitions to CHS Robotics Trip Proposal?
Yes.
Is that you?
That was in there.
This Wagner?
Robotics?
Robotics?
We're waiting for you, we're getting nervous. I'm like, I thought...
We can just vote no. And you can move on.
I don't have to go.
Paul Charles.
Hi, Christopher Wagner.
We have a proposal for a trip for our robotics team, for your robotics team.
Does it have a name or is the trip called Trip A?
No, it's hush.
It should be just the Robotics Trip.
Well, the type to sell, that was me. No?
No.
Do it right now? It's called Battle Cry.
Battle Cry.
Okay, and it's at WPI, New Worcester. Okay? Get my five dollars left, you see what I'm saying? Oh, bribery. We can, we can, we can, we'll give you another one.
What about bribery?
What do we got?
I just took mine home last night.
Oh, you did?
I did. Yeah, you can sign any... It's your call.
Very cute, very cute.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Trip's gonna be May seventeenth to May eighteenth. It's an overnight and we're gonna stay in the dorms, WPI. Should be around fifteen students. We don't know exactly Friday, we should know, between ten and fifteen. Chaprum's gone. During the day, I'll be there and CJ, one of your physics teacher will be there. And overnight would be CJ.
And me.
And Patty, for the girls. So it'll be, we had, as a team this year, we had twenty-three students and five were young ladies. So hopefully all of them will be coming. We're good. Don't know exactly how many, but what else we got?
How many did you say, seventeen?
Um, no, should be, we're hopefully around fifteen. We don't know exactly what the number is right now. We're gonna bring a bus from here, probably around twelve o'clock on that Friday. Registration's at two fifteen there. And then we start practicing in the afternoon, then early evening.
So it's up to fifteen, but is that all you can bring for the competition or why would you not bring the whole team?
Oh, no, 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 just, they can, but we just got kind of our numbers in our head and our meetings and things like that. It's gonna be around fifteen.
Okay, so that's your guess.
Well, that's great, we'd love to have everybody, more.
There's a lot of things going on that weekend.
Okay.
And so some of the students have indicated that they may not be able to go.
Okay.
Lot of music stuff or something going on.
Music, yeah, music, there's a cruise, you know, singing.
Singing, stuff like that, I guess, something going on there, so, but that's what I'm saying around, I don't know exactly what the numbers are yet. Okay, should come by Friday. So we're gonna take the bus, okay? And in the afternoon on Saturday, when we come back, parents will be picking students up.
Same competition as the first?
Same robot, yeah.
Same robot, same competition?
Yep.
I just wanted to congratulate you. I was able to make it down for the Friday competition for the regional. I don't think people realize how big the regional is.
It's crazy.
And how extremely well-funded some of the competition was.
It's, it is.
I mean, two of the, two of the top teams were, one from Toronto and one from Montreal. And I mean, they clearly had significant resources to put together the machinery that they had, you know? So having been at Nashua and, you know, been to first events with that group, for a school the size of us to finish as well as we did...
Did a great job.
It was, I really am baffled as to why we did not make it. I know you guys are feeling the same way. They did so well in the, in the regular round and then didn't get selected, but such is the luck of...
The kids were down, almost five or six, I think, on Saturday night and they were just, and Friday nights were crazy, so they did a great job. Kids did a great job, they were just focused. And, you know, twenty-three of them, and all the parents and all the mentors, everybody got together. That was crazy, you know, all the support from you guys. That lady right there is the best, you know, supporting the kids.
It wasn't Woodstock, but it wasn't happening.
I'm not that old, but... You tell me.
I just wanna thank, I wanna thank Paul too. Paul's a parent here and we did not have a first advisor. It was getting really late. I twisted his arm really hard and, you know, he stepped into the position and he loved it and the kids liked him.
It's great.
And all the parent support, you would not believe the parent support of Patty. I don't think she's gonna be able not to do it next year. She keeps threatening, but she'll be here.
Well, my agreement with Bob was when Zachary graduated, I wish I could leave, but I've already spoken to some of the parents from the freshmen and a few of them were involved with the first team at the middle school. And there was actually, one of the parents used to work for First and I thought, well, she'd be an awesome one to, so they're gonna, you know, I'm gonna try to train them and get them ready to take my spot.
I have a couple questions. So I have a, sidebar question to this, but there was a article in the newspaper this week about how Trinity had gone to more of an individual competition with, you know, there was, actually I think that their team, they had like nine teams competing on a smaller, with a different robot actually competing against each other. Is there any thoughts of doing something like that or are we still doing, because they sort of found it, they got more students and whatever involved in that, and more thought process more in that, and that, is there any thoughts of that?
I think CJ is actually looking to incorporate that into one of his classes possibly. And that, that VEX was something that Trinity had been invested in before and actually First and VEX used to work side by side and there was some parting of the ways at some point. And Trinity had pretty much won the competition, the first competition at the PDASR many times and probably was thinking, well, we've already done this already so many times that, and they had already made an investment in VEX and there was a, there's a curriculum around that and I think they decided just to go with that. But I do think that that's something that CJ is interested in pursuing in the classroom.
We talked about that, I remember.
Yeah. Paul, I'm trying to think of his name, the physics teacher, physics and math teacher at Trinity. He and I worked together on the, on the Inteltech curriculum that the course is based on and it's that platform. One of the issues with First for, and Trinity's not a big school either, but if you wanna compete at the national level, you need to spend thirteen months a year fundraising. I mean, it's, it is constant and ongoing. You can take two days off after this year's competition is over and then you have to start for the next year. It's easily thirty to forty thousand dollars just to, just to cover the bare expenses. And if you start outsourcing work and starting to get external people, you know, it can easily run over fifty thousand dollars to run a first team. And so I think Trinity having that level of success and knowing that their kids are getting the engineering background with their reputation, they can probably take a step back from First and still have kids learn the things that they need to learn and use that as a way to get, to prepare them for the engineering programs that they're going to. Quite honestly, you, whether or not you do extremely well at the regional and national level, from my perspective, is as much a function of, of your external partnerships and your funding than it is the skills and ability of the students. And so you can have a team like ours that the students learn and develop the skills that they need to do for, you know, not having to fundraise fifty to sixty thousand dollars every year. So even the cost of going to nationals every year is, is very expensive by the time, I mean, you know what your bus trip, your trip to WPI is gonna be, can you imagine taking twenty-some people to, where is it?
St. Louis.
And then the other twenty you were talking about, that's on the west coast, so imagine that.
So I think part of it is a strategic decision, can we give the students the experience that we want? Another thing is if you do multiple VEX groups, you get more people doing the programming and more people doing more things. Because right now, if you have a single team of twenty-some people, people tend to become very specialized. And so it, in some ways, it's a different and in some ways a better experience if you're working on the VEX platform, because more people end up doing, you know, more diverse jobs and getting a broader learning experience. But I, you know, I think it's pretty much a personal choice, I think.
Do we happen to have any companies that have kind of adopted our teams?
Who do?
So they donate each year, you don't have to...
We have one company that we started out with and they sponsored us for two years. And then another, other parents got involved and two parents last year brought in, each company gave us five thousand dollars. And then this year, again, one of the parents obtained another five thousand dollars. And so with the district money and that, we're able to do what we need to do and not spend our whole life on fundraising, which is really awesome. Because with being such a, you know, small school, small group of people, it's a, you know, we don't have the fundraising machine that, say, Nashua or Manchester or even Trinity has, you know?
And we have the advantage of the regional is here.
Right.
So if you're from, if you're from Toronto, they, they, you know, bring the group of twenty here from Toronto, put them up, have all that additional cost, so...
We're ten minutes up the road, it's just a great thing.
Oh, it was a fabulous experience.
It's worldwide and we're right here. So I mean, it's just terrific.
And we had both the governor and Dean Hayman stop by our pit and met our team and congratulated our team.
Both senators are there and...
Yes, both the senators were both there. It's really crazy. It's just really an amazing time. And the kids, the freshmen, to watch their face at that tournament, just is, it's incredible. I can't even describe it. I just, I have the best time every year and I really am, but I miss it, so...
Well, you don't have to stop.
Thank you.
Steve had a question.
Yeah, two questions. The funding from the robotics team account?
Yes.
Is that the student activities account or the co-curricular account?
Well, it's everything. The money from Praxair went into the district grant account.
Right, no, I just wanted clarification, just for the record.
Yes, and then we have the district accounts, the different ones, and then the co-curricular stuff.
Okay. My other, my other question, it says parents will be bringing the students home. Is every parent going to be there to bring the students?
No, 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 just how we went to, you know, to the Rise and other places we've been to, it's a group of parents or, you know, maybe five kids in a van type of stuff.
I just wanna make sure there's permission slip signed so that parents are authorizing another parent to drive them home.
They'll be there.
Yeah, we did that for the...
Okay.
Now for a number of things, so let's...
Any more questions?
Well, actually, what Steve said, the policy says that won't happen at all. Permission slip or not?
Yeah, I thought that's what the policy is.
Under no condition will a parent transport another child to or from an event. It's actually under the domestic and international travel. Because it talks about that they have to have a waiver to not use school transportation either to or from. And it's specifically about, all students must be transported with the group or remain with the group for the duration of the trip. There's another thing about parents.
And their own parent, travel home?
With a permission slip from them, which then there's insurance and other things that fall in, so I...
Yeah, they have to provide proof...
There's a lot of hurdles.
We've all done, we've all filled out those forms and put in our insurance cards and he has a whole file on all of us.
I guess I'm a little surprised that there was self-transportation to the first event without prior authorization.
Those, I typically see a waft of those in before each of them. Now, the other thing too is because, I don't know, they're fully funded co-curricular, but we do get some for, for each of those. So typically there will be, you know, the applications come in, typically they're the day before sort of thing, but they come in and I sign off on them.
It's right there. Nope. In no case may a parent transport another student who is not their child. Individuals providing unauthorized student transportation do so at their own expense in life.
Policy procedure.
And then you have to be really careful if they're a district employee that has students in the car.
Well, yeah, that's a separate issue.
Yeah.
So where does that leave them?
So do we need to get a bus for the way home, is what you're saying?
Either that or you have to work out something that would be agreeable with the superintendent as to how they're gonna be transported and then have all the rate waivers and parental forms and...
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, as long as, I mean, if you wanna put in the motion approved, providing they either meet the policy or get a waiver, so that way the board's covered.
You'll also need a waiver for medical.
Yeah, they, their application indicated, somebody has CPR?
CJ, question.
Beyond CPR though, the policy is.
Exactly.
I would be very confident that they would have medical coverage.
It says there's medical coverage there, you just have to account for the time when you're not at the event, which would just be travel.
And basically you have to do your homework. The New York trip investigated and so as long as you know, you know, where you are, where's the nearest medical and everything is organized ahead of time, so if something happens, you're not running around, then... And we've actually done it earlier this year.
This competition has been going on for quite a while, at WPI. We've just never participated in it before. It's been going on...
Toby, staff.
Can we get a motion? The question is whether or not the board is gonna waive their policy, because that's our first motion, is to waive our poly-transportation policy. And if we, because if we don't waive our transportation policy, then it doesn't matter to vote on the...
They can still do it, they just have to get a boss.
They have to follow the policy at that point in time.
It's actually EEAG.
So then the question becomes, once you waive it once, are you gonna revise the policy? Because then you...
There's a reason why it's in there, so do we want to waive that?
If I remember correctly, this was from two thousand eight, it was driven by Primex.
That's what I was thinking.
We went round and round on this, this is when Ralph was on the board. There's technically nothing the district can do if a parent shows up and says, I'm taking my child home. You cannot...
Correct.
Prevent them from taking their child home. All you can say is, you assume the liability of transporting your student from here, the district, you know, all those legal disclaimers that we talked about with Primex.
Yeah, Primex did two things. One, they recommended the policy, then they also recommended the wording on the permission slips to cover us both ways. They clearly supported the policy. I actually, I actually thought the superintendent had the right to waive, because I know Elaine has gotten them in the past.
I think there's the ability to waive the medical piece, the requirement that the nurse or somebody else, I'm not sure if the other waiver's there. Mr. Miller, is that?
I think that's, because I remember the medical thing was, that's on the overnights Field trip organizer may request a waiver from the superintendent on the medical. And it's a certified nurse or ENT is what the level that's set for overnight field trips, unless certified nursing staff is available at the site, which I'm assuming there would be at the physical event.
When's the trip? When's the trip?
May seventeenth and nineteenth.
Okay, so yes, Steve, I would recommend that the board approve it, but not waive the policy. And we'll, we have some time to figure it out, you know, whether to get them there and be compliant with the policy or, you know...
We're having a meeting on the eighth, which is before this, so...
Do we have the case in?
They probably wanna get the wheels in motion too.
You wanna be one of the first schools so you can participate and not be on the reserve. If you read the thing, it's like fifty-four schools.
Well, we are registered, but we do have, I believe if we don't pay by a certain time, we're gonna lose our space.
Especially for the dorms, yeah.
So worst case scenario, they have to buy a boss, right?
Right.
Yeah, what is...
Have the bus come and get him.
Right.
No, that would be fine too.
That'd be fine.
So there's nothing that's gonna keep you from doing that?
Yeah, just like getting a bus, you know, it's just, you know, a few hundred dollars pays for this.
Yeah, 'cause I'm not comfortable just waiving it like that.
I don't have a knowing the reason why it's there.
Yeah, so...
I'll make a motion to approve the field trip pending the transportation being sorted out.
Second. Any more discussion? Polls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Motion carries five zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
There's another one for GMS recess relay fundraiser?
Uh, no, that's deferred until the eighth.
Correspondence, we have a letter from the VFW. Hudson Memorial Post five seven nine one and its auxiliaries will be hosting its annual loyalty day scholastic award ceremony on Friday, May third at seven. They plan to honor several Litchfield teachers, including Margaret Perrin at GMS, Carolyn Late at LMS and Charles Moore at CHS with a loyalty day award. The board is invited to attend. If you'd like to move in.
And I actually will be in attendance representing the district at that.
Okay. We also have a letter from the LEA, our Litchfield Education Association, to the school board. This is to inform you that the LEA desires to bargain a master contract for the year two thousand fourteen, fifteen. This notification is in accordance with requirements of RSA two seventy-three A three. The LEA would like to begin negotiations as early as spring. Please contact me at seven eight for first negotiations session. Approval draft minutes? Anyone have anything with the minutes? Actually, does anyone have any other correspondence, I'm sorry? You have a motion?
So I'm eight.
Second. Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Motion carries five zero zero.
I'm getting a ton of motions, I mean...
Community forum, actually before community forum, we have a community member that would like to speak to adult education. Mr. LaSalle?
Thank you. I taught a course for the adult education course here at the, at the school last spring and it went over very well and I've hoped to teach other courses in the future. And then I heard that the adult education had been either suspended or something, discontinued, so that's why I'm here. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Rich LaSalle, so I've lived here in Litchfield for thirty-four years, been very involved in the community, mostly as a volunteer. I served three terms on the school board and happened to be the chairman when we passed the bond and broke ground here at the school. And Dr. Perrow blames it all on me. I've been training adults since nineteen seventy-five, military, corporate, community college, career school and the federal government. I'm an occasional substitute teacher here at Campbell and most of my work has dealt with software applications. I consider myself kind of an expert trainer on Microsoft Office. The mission here of the school, and I don't think I need to remind you, but is to join with parents, students, staff and community, become a collaboration of learners for character, courage, respect and responsibility. And the number one thing says inspire excellence and perform lifelong learning. Lifelong learning to me today is an necessity. I see people all the time who've fallen behind and it's, with the technology the way it is, you need to constantly be learning and that's what I'm involved in. I think we have a tremendous number of audiences here in town who could benefit from this. People who are out of work, who, I'm involved a lot in training people who are out of work, have to build up their computer skills to try to elevate their resume or courses like people who are, their company's going from office oh-three to oh-seven or ten and the company doesn't provide any training, they could certainly benefit by it. A lot of people who are, who are hobbyists, I've known people who were amateur astronomers and they gave courses on astronomy that were very successful at other schools. Senior people, you know, there are a lot of people here in Litchfield, we have a lot of senior communities and a lot of people do not have access to the internet. I train internet courses and there are a lot of these seniors that could very well benefit by that. I think, I'm not sure what has been done up to this point to market the courses that we have, but I just feel that there's a tremendous opportunity and you could really do a benefit to the community by having, providing courses that people would take at a very modest cost that, I know the, recently the rec committee did a function over here at Dare Upon, it was ice skating and I was so thrilled that they did this, because I was back many years ago, probably thirty years ago, I was on the rec committee and we didn't do ice skating because of insurance reasons. And for whatever reason, they were able to do it and it was wonderful. The community supported them greatly. And most of that was done through Facebook, most of the marketing was done through Facebook. And I think that, you know, something like, you know, the statistics show that about seventy percent of New Hampshire's on Facebook and I gotta believe in Litchfield is probably higher than that. I think this sort of thing, community education could be offered and that would be very well received. I know, and I've been involved in various activities in town, I've always gone to where the people were. You know, a card table at the dump or the recycling center and you could pass out flyers, that sort of thing. Election Day, anytime when people come in and out, they'd be interested. There's a senior group that meets, I think bi-weekly, and I think they usually meet at least in the summertime or at Dare Upon. I gotta believe that we could have courses for them. You know, when we, when we built the school, one of the reasons, one of the justifications for the auditorium was that Litchfield really didn't have an identity. We didn't have a school, we didn't have a zip code, we didn't have our own phone exchange, we didn't have a downtown, we had no industry. So Litchfield really did not, did not have an identity. So we knew that the school could really... So we knew that the school could really be something that Litchfield could be proud of. And one of the reasons that we built the auditorium, we didn't have to have an auditorium. We built the auditorium to provide a, a place for the community, community events and so forth. And I got, I, I believe, I'm, I'm very happy the way that the school and Litchfield have married together. I think it's wonderful, the enthusiasm, the school spirit that I see is great. And I think this, this adult education could be just an extension of that. And I think that if you get people into the school, for whatever reason, who don't have any other reason to come into the school, they'll be proud of it. And those folks will be a lot more supportive when it comes budget time and so forth. So I'm here to, you know, I've, I've done a lot of things on a volunteer basis, and I believe very much in this, and I'm willing to continue in that vein.
As one of the instructors, were you paid for it, or was it all volunteer?
Yes. I was paid for that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think the reason, I think it broke even, but it was the administration costs that put us on the edge, right?
I don't think even it broke even.
Actually, 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 it did break even in the sense that it paid for the teachers, instructors, and stuff. What, what, what took it down was the cost of the two people that administered, or the people that administered the cost was just, you know, it was like a $6,000, uh, cost, and, and there was absolutely no way that the program can sort that, so.
Did we have to do that? Or was this guy was like stipend position or something? Or could it be run by someone?
It was, but I, I don't think that there's any, any policy that says it has to be a, a paid stipend position.
So the community could run it on their own if they wanted to, or Rich could run it on his own if he had a client?
Yeah, what happened was, uh, in, uh, 2000, um, when I was hired as the assistant principal, part of the...
2000?
Uh, 2007.
I was going to say. We haven't seen you for quite a while.
I was thinking of the school opening, but anyway, in 2007, so part of the job description, uh, when I got hired by Kathy Hamlet, I would start the community adult education program. The community had talked about it for a long time, they had pilots, and so we, um, but we had to be completely self-funded within three years. And, um, when we started out, um, we, we did okay. We had the first, the first session, we had 58 adult learners. In 2009, we were up to 119. In 2010, we were up to 182, and we went down to 145. But we would run classes in the beginning, sometimes with three people, because we were trying to get people in so they would know about the program. We went from two sessions to three sessions because we felt that, you know, it was really offering a service to the, to the community. We were doing it on Mondays and Wednesdays from 6:00 to 8:00, um, so that there would be a choice in dates for people. We just did do one night a week, and, um, but what happened was we, we couldn't break even. That was, that was the, and it was a really bad budget time, programs were getting cut, and it was a program that got cut.
I think we cut it, and then, if I remember, it went to Warren, did it, and failed? Or did it, did it go to a special election and failed?
It was a special election.
It didn't pass there?
Uh, I think it did pass there, but it had to be self-sufficient at the end of that year. And then the next year came in the budget, and we cut it out of the budget because that's, well, that's what the board said we would do. I think I was the one that stood up and said I would make the motion to remove that if we couldn't be self-sufficient, and I know that was an issue because the election was in September, so we lost some of the first session timing-wise, but there wasn't a lot we could do with that.
If I could just address the board very briefly, I'm Sue Duffy from Arcadian Lane. I took a wonderful course in Excel from Patricia Ladner a couple of years ago at adult education. I was very, very disappointed, as were a number of my friends and neighbors, when the program was eliminated. I always assumed it was self-funding. I imagine that there would be members of the community who would volunteer to help with administrative costs and so forth. I'd be glad to help out myself if I could do so. I would love to see the program return. Thanks.
Maybe the way, it's a way we could organize and so that it is self-administered, and the instructors kind of take a portion of what comes in, so that way it never runs out of money, it never loses money or something.
That's how it, that's how the program funds it.
Can it run outside of the school?
Well, camera outside of the school, it's in the school, so we have to be responsible.
A group could come and say, we want to use the school, it's educational-based for the people of Litchfield, and here's the nights, and it just has to be scheduled appropriately.
But yes.
You would have to have some supervision, which could be...
And that way there, we're not responsible for the costs and all that, it's just...
Oh, we shouldn't be responsible for the costs.
Well, the problem is the group would need insurance.
I mean, I mean, there's, at some point in time, you know, we, you know, they, those people, even if it's 180 of them, are still supporting the school every year.
Yeah.
So if they, if they want to use the school, they should be allowed to be able to use the school, just like any sports team that comes in or anything like that, um, or the other, or the other.
Well, then do we discharge more for the...
Well, I, I think the program, because the teachers were paid based on the students that were in the classroom, I, I believe, is that correct?
No, no, uh, we, we had to come up with a, a formula, and so, uh, we actually, we paid them by the hour, because that's what they originally were told by Kathy Hamlet that caused some issues, because we had like line dancing that had 24 people, and you might have photo that had seven, you know? We knew the break-even point was eight people. If we had eight people in a class, we could run the class and, and we could, could pay. Part of the administrative classes, every single time, we sent out a mailer to every Litchfield resident, and so we, we, you know, there was, there was a lot that, you know, happened after the school hours to get those mailings out, to let people know what we were doing, and, um, you know.
I think that Lori and I both approve this, uh, approve of this in principle. I think it's an excellent thing. I really believe that, that in every community, but especially in a small community, the school is the center of the community. And I really believe in the community-school model, which really says the school's open. You know, not 24/7, but it, it, it's there for the community who support it and pay for it, whether or not they have the student involved or not. I think, it sounds to me as, as though the infrastructure costs is what did it in. And I think we can find ways to, to either eliminate or very much minimalize that, um, you know, through volunteers, through, you know, uh, administrative support, through Lori's office or my office, and find a way to, to, you know, do some of that routine stuff. And I certainly would be supportive of starting something in the fall in a way that would not impact the budget. If you can get a little bit of money ahead, because what, what you need to do is, is you need to make a decision when you don't have the, whatever the break-even point is, then you either reduce your, your pay or you don't run the course, and you just have to say it is what it is, because we don't have a cushion to, to fall back on. But I think you can do it, and there are times that things won't run, but, but, uh, I, I think it's important, and I'm, I'm willing to, you know, put some time in it and, and support it.
And I thi, I think if, if we watched the numbers, we'd see the numbers did go up, but we did run things in the beginning with three, five people, because we didn't want to turn them away, because then they would stop signing up for the course the next time. So we're really trying to get momentum. And I think to start it over again, we're still going to need to get the momentum back again, you know? But a lot of people loved coming to, to the school. We offered a wide variety, from intro to Italian, you know, we offered Spanish, computers, photo, and sewing, quilting, and it really was a hub for the community. It was, it was, it was a lot of fun. I enjoyed it.
Chris Pescucci?
Chris Pescucci, 12 Colonial Drive. I came prepared to speak about one issue, but sitting here, there's just a couple more I want to touch on. One is the robotics. That is a fantastic program. The kids do get a lot out of that. I, I agree, actually, that that is one program where more money does probably give you better results. Fundraising is a, is an integral part, if you read the whole history of robotics, fundraising is a very vital component of the entire program. It's not something separate, it's encouraged. So, um, uh, I hope the, the school and the kids don't sell themselves short, because they, they can be one of the top groups. Some other towns were mentioned, Nashua fundraising machines, Trinity, I know, is up there, and there's, they are a fundraising machine, but they're a tiny school, that's not a big school. They're a fundraising machine because the kids, the parents, they do put a lot of time and effort into it, so it can be done, and this, the, the kids and the parents and the teachers and the whole community in this town could also get it done and make it right up to however high it can go. I'm confident of that. The, um, adult education, um, seems like we just pretty much had this whole conversation a couple of years ago, and been through a very lengthy, very, very detailed, um, discussion. Of course, how could you not be for education of anybody, adult education? Uh, if you, um, consider the program we had here on what people got out of it, you're right, it was a success. However, if you look at it from the financial end, it was a failure. Failure means it wasn't covering the, the costs, which again means if it was anything other than funded with public money, it would be bankrupt and out of business. So, you know, I'm all for, if you guys want to bring it back, but it has to, as I think you'd probably all agree, I hope you'd all agree, you just put it on a warrant, you put a dollar amount to it, you ask the voters, and it doesn't really matter if, what it costs. If the voters say yeah, they'll pay for it. Other than that, the mission of this board here is to educate the children. That is the mandate. That is what you are here to perfect. The children here have no choice. They have to come, they come to this school, and they deserve quality education. Parents, adults, everybody else, it is absolutely a nice thing to do, it's great, we could all benefit from it. However, there are options. If the community doesn't want to, uh, put up the money, there's other towns, there's Nashua, there's community learning centers, there's London Derry, there's a lot of places parents can go, because they have a choice. But I'm all for, give the voters a choice, if that's the decision you make, and you could sell it, um, next, um, next session. Now, as for the budget season, many people believe budget season begins in September, but actually, as you guys well know, budget season's year-round. The reason why I'm bringing this up now is so hopefully during this process, you can all consider all options and points of view, and balance that with the lessons from past elections, more so recent. In the past, getting a budget approved may have been as simple as getting a unanimous recommendation from both the governing bodies and the budget committee. As we saw this past election, that may not be the case anymore. Votes to recommend from the elected reps did not translate into votes to approve by the voter, by the voting public. At the last school board meeting, I heard you guys, I was watching it at home, talking about how to, um, how to teachers, about the teachers' contract, and if you held some event prior, some parent-teacher event that you held prior, just prior to the election, as opposed to just after the election, that might have gotten the teachers' contract passed. You spoke, uh, something, uh, you commented about, uh, there was, um, no voting by children in the school this year, like there was in past years, where they vote for mascot or something. You spoke to how the school was closed, meaning so maybe parents didn't have the incentive to come to school to vote, that that might have contributed to some failed warrants or even the, the not passing of the teachers' contract. Personally, I don't believe changing any of that stuff would have changed the outcome. In my opinion, that's, I hope that's not the way you plan on analyzing the results. I think you should be totally honest when making an attempt to learn from the past elections, because if not, we all might be in for another surprise next year. The truth is, just about anything that had more money, additional taxes attached to it, failed at the ballot. That's the way you guys should look at it, at least in the short term. On the town side, the proposed budget was a small dollar amount more than the default, and the proposed failed. On the school side, the proposed budget was a small dollar amount less than the default, and the proposed passed. One could conclude that the voters really wanted was in the proposed school budget, or, on the other hand, you can conclude that the only reason why the school budget passed was because it was $14,000 less than the default. Again, I'm offering you another side. It's not a wish, it's not a hope, it's not glee, it's not sorrow. I'm just trying to explain, properly analyze. And if it was the other way around, with the $14,000 difference, we may have been operating under a default budget this year, quite honestly, is one way to look at it. And even parents with children in the school system did indeed vote no on school spending. That is a fact, and that's also something you need to consider. That's important. If, um, the reason being, if any here in this room believe that the state of the economy will be any better by next election, which it might be, and if you believe the taxpayers will more freely vote for more spending, then you, then that would dictate the direction during this entire budget process. However, if you believe that there's a chance, any chance, that the mood and the state of the economy will be the same or even worse, then you should honestly discuss that and help decide what direction to go in, because if that's the case, it might just matter, is there a spending attached to it, or is it just a matter of the difference between the pros and the default? Again, I'm just trying to lay out another avenue to look at, because we have to understand to make, help make decisions, whether right or wrong, you need to know that. I own my own business, and in my world, uh, I'm making some of those decisions right now. I'm trying to determine what I need for my business, what I want, but most importantly, I have to consider what my customers are willing to pay me. It's a tough task. I have a huge list of things I need to run my business, I have a hard-working group of people that I would believe I need to employ, I have lists of things to make my job easier, and a list of things I want. It all means nothing if my customers say no to the money that I'm asking them to part with. It's not enough anymore to just get the elected reps on the same page with an affirmative recommendation, as the voters have the final say. Throughout the year, there'll be a lot of people approaching with things that they really need, and I'm sure things that are absolutely crucial to educating the children, technology and such. Again, it all means nothing if the voters say no at the ballot. So please be honest when you're going through the budget process and determining what you want to place in there, what really needs to get done, because that's the goal, to educate the children. And, um, and we all know that, and the community knows that. The voters, the people, are paying close attention to not only the money they spend in their own households, but they're also paying close attention to the money that's spent in the town, the school, state, federal, so we have to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more committed input?
Assistant Vice President, 11th Rocket Drive. Um, I'm here as a taxpayer, and, um, first of all, I would like to say that I did enjoy working in the adult education program. I met a lot of really great people, and I hope that there would be a way to bring it back and, you know, find some volunteers or, or something. Sue's actually really good with administrative stuff, although probably unlikely saying that. But, um, anyway, so I just wanted to say that. Um, thank you for approving the field trip for robotics. And then the only other thing I'd like to bring up is, the, the process for the teachers' contract is a taxpayer in Litchfield. I mean, in the past, I've worked for different places, and when we, a contract was ratified where two people agreed to it, that was the end of the process. And then, you know, went forward, and the people that bargained got what they bargained for. And I know that the process is different in the town. Um, I'm not sure I really understand that, but I know that that's the way it is. And so there was a contract that was ratified and agreed to by the LEA and the school board, which, you know, say thank you to everybody for that, that was great. It was signed by both parties, and it was put on the ballot, and I guess about 45 people in the town voted against Article 2. And I, I just, I don't know, I'm asking some questions, I know you guys don't have the answers, but I would like to just raise them, and, you know, hopefully in the future we can figure out what happened and how it can work in the, I don't know, so that we all get what we wanted, I guess, or bargained for, or agreed to. So what exactly did the voters vote down? Was it the money? Was it the contract? Was it both things? How, is there a way to figure that out? Why would a voter vote to give the district more money to cover essential costs such as teacher salaries, when almost every year, more money than what then was what included in Article 2, is returned to the town? You know, sometimes, I mean, I think, you know, it's good to return money if you didn't spend it all, but on the other hand, it's a question, did you really need that, all that money, or not? If there is year-end savings, why can't the money be used to fund some of the teachers' ratified contracts? I don't know, I mean, I know there's ramifications of that, and I know there's certain things that that can be used for, but I'm, and then, good teachers are the most important factor in providing a good education to our children. And I, I don't know what the answer is, but I... And I, I don't know what the answer is, but I just, you know, we've lost good teachers in this town, and, you know, sometimes it seems like the only way they can get a raise is to go to another school district, and that's really a sad thing, you know, because our kids are important, they're our future, they're going to be paying our retirement. So, you know, they're, I think, a really great investment. And I, I don't, like I said, I don't have any answers, I have a lot of questions. And I thank you all, really, from the bottom of my heart, for serving this town, and with such dedication. You guys sit here many hours, and I do sometimes, if I'm not here, I'm watching you at home, and I have to confess, sometimes I do fall asleep. Not because you're boring, just because I'm tired, and I, I really do appreciate everything that you guys do, so thank you. And I'm going to leave now because my son's playing, I think, in the cafeteria, so I'm going to go be a mom for a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more coming to the input?
Did we want Dr. Corcoran to come up with a plan to look at how we could do it without spending any money on it?
So Rich, what's your idea? Are you willing to formulate a plan with a group of teachers that were part of the program before over the summer, try to come back to us in July or August? You know, or sooner?
I, I just want to see it fly, you know. I mean, I, I, I think that there's enough demand, there's enough audiences, I think we just need to get the word out and, and get it done. We've done an awful lot in this town with volunteers, and, you know, I'm not saying forever, I'm going to, I'm going to do that forever.
Well, no.
If we get a booming thing, you know, then we, you know, we have to do something else. But if we get it going, and, you know, I'm willing to do that.
Yeah, I, you know, I strongly believe that if the program is successful, if there's a class that, you know, it has to try to be as self-sufficient as, as, as possible. And if we do get it up and running and that is, is working, you know, and you need, need something that could go to the voters or something, that would be fine, but I think that at this point in time, where the program sort of sits based on discussions of two years ago, was that it was, it needed, it's going to need that grassroots process to revive it back up.
I feel confident that we can do that.
So I looked at the last two, excuse me, years of expenditures, we spent $14,000 in one year, $10,000 the second year.
But that's not the money coming back in?
No, that, I'm just saying, that's what was expended.
Yeah.
I, I don't have a picture of the revenues, I imagine Mr. Martin could look it up before the end of the meeting. The, the largest cost was the administrative salary, but then there was $1,000 spent on postage to get the information out to the people. You have to find an efficient way to do that, maybe it's the $250 you can pay to the HLN to get it to everybody's household as a flyer instead of trying to do a bulk mail thing. I think there's some inventive things that I'm sure Mr. Lasalle's has taken advantage of in the past, whether as a volunteer or his, you know, whatever official capacity he's operated in. But I think it does have to be to the point that it was, you know, revenue coming in is offsetting the cost of the instructor, if it's a paid instructor, or materials, whatever the case is. I know there was a material fee for some classes.
Woods.
Wood shop.
Photography.
Yeah. But, you know, now photography, maybe you can go digital and you don't have a
Right, right.
A fee.
Right, right.
I mean, the opportunity, they could use the software here, just like we talked about the digital photography classes part of the course of studies, so.
In 2012, we had $2,300 in revenue. 2011, we had $9,200 in revenue.
Yeah, we spent about $14,000 in 2011.
It was running about $5,000 to $6,000, which was basically the administrative.
Yep.
If you can spread the workload over people, so that if you're running programs Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday night, and you're not asking somebody to be here, giving up three nights a week, and we can, we can, you know, offer the admin support through, you know, Principal Rothaus's office and mine, then I would really like to see if we can, we can do something on a shoestring. I think it's worthwhile. I think it's, I think it's as important for the school it is, as it is for the community, quite honestly.
Excellent. We'll see you in 60 days, or sooner.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
Superintendent's comments?
Still, Mike, follow you. I have a, a little bit of a list here. Number one, congratulations go to Assistant Principal Chris Corcoran, who was recently hired to become the new principal of John Stark Regional High School. So congratulations to Chris. The position was posted last Friday. It closes Monday, April 29th. We anticipate having two rounds of interviews, and we have had, so far, a reasonably good number of applicants. I haven't had a detailed look to see where we are, but I think we're, we're in double digits as of Wednesday, so in five days, and we'll, we'll go from there.
Just a question on that?
Sure.
I, I saw the email where you laid out what you expected to say, the makeup of the committee. It wasn't clear if it was a mixture of people across both, or if it would be that same makeup but different people for round one and round two?
Oh, round two will be, round one really is a, is a ruling. And what we're trying to do is get broad participation and, and different perspectives. So for example, the list of people that, that we're looking at, you know, we have somebody there who has been here since the school opened, somebody else who's an experienced teacher, but very little time here. So, you know, some representation from, from a broad range of, of folks. Second round will be, I mean, in essence, the two people who will be held accountable for the hire would be that one over there, and this one. And so it'll be Lori and I, plus Julie, right, curriculum, so another SAU person. I think Deb was going to be there more in the HR capacity for procedure. And Lori, can you remember, I thought there was one other person?
Devin?
We looked at one of the two, either the director of guidance or the athletic director. So we have, you know, Lori and her other administrative person, Julie and myself, and Deb there to facilitate the process, and that would be the, the final decision. So round one becomes a ruling. Don't, we don't want the three best, we want, you know, if you only feel there's two viable candidates, then, right, and the same process we use essentially with, with the BA position. You know, if you had, if you had six viable candidates, then you'd have to probably say, okay, well, you know, we don't want to move, have six finalists. I mean, quite honestly, you know, if we get two, two viable quality people, then we have to look at, at the fit after that, but that's, that's essentially the goal.
Is there any, any thought of having a school board member?
We talked about that, and we basically said that, that, in this case, there, there are advantages. You know, from my perspective, it, number one, it's good to have input, number two, when you see the, the pool, it's nice to have a board member who can speak to what they've seen in, in the interview. In this case, we thought that given the timelines, I mean, we need to, we're a little bit late in the hiring process, we wanted to be able to run something fairly streamlined, and we had the conversation, said we thought we'd, we'd, you know, put it forward this way. I think at the AP level, it has less value than at the principal level and the BA level. You know, likewise with the HR position, we felt, we talked about whether or not it would be beneficial for a, a board person. But, you know, that's, that was the, the recommendation and the decision. If the board feels strongly voted, then I think we'd certainly be open to, to conversations.
I just think that we need to make sure that, that this is a very strong working relationship as we move forward in this, in that position, and that, that we bring somebody who is an added value to the, the whole process, you know, while I, while I do understand that the assistant principal, and we want, I, you know, my feeling on this is it's another manager, another senior manager. And senior managers should be able to work across all lines and bring all ideas and all processes to the table, and, and they should, they should be able to have open conversations in that, in that sense. And at that level, you know, I, I think somebody who thinks outside the box, that can add to the education process for all the students and to the teachers, is important. So whichever processes going forth, I, I believe we need to make sure we have somebody who is going to add value to the management team, looking at it more, because that's where that person falls, is as a, is basically second person in charge of the high school. So that's a very senior-level individual on a daily basis, and that, we need to make sure that we have a very strong candidate.
I think there are two basic philosophies, and, you know, one is more of a hands-off, let, let have a very open first process, and then you deal with whoever makes it through. And quite honestly, I, I think it's more effective in most cases to have a very directed first round. First round is important because you get to see how, how they handle different people. As a candidate, you get different perspectives in the discussion of what was a quality answer, and we chose people to, to get that, that sort of perspective. But, you know, once the candidates leave and you're making decisions about which of these candidates is, is viable, and what are the, what are the more critical needs of the school, you have to have some pretty frank debates about where we are and what we need, which is one of the reasons that I think it's, it's better if it's an internal group of SAU and school people, because sometimes you just have to sit down and have those conversations. And I think the, with superintendent search, with principal searches, with the BA search, the value of a board member in the external piece outweighs that, that internal conversation. But, you know, I, I mean, the way we, we sat down with the BA search and the way that we moved with the HR search, really is we'll sit down and say, here are the minimum qualifications, here are the absolute essentials that have to be there, boom, 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 and then here's the nice two halves. And, and it's really a, a very principled conversation at the end about, you know, which are the, the strongest candidates, but also where's that line, where, how many viable candidates do we have to move forward? So it's, to me, it's the conversation at the end, and the ability to identify and come to agreement on those crucial things that have to be there, and, because it is such a broad job description, what are the things we actually have to have, and sometimes you have to get into the whys, you know, which is why it's, it's nice to be able to have that conversation. So I think that, that I'm comfortable, I, I think this is a, a good way to move forward. I think we have people who are, will, are both representative of the building, and especially the, the teaching staff, but I think who are, who are viewed to be pretty objective, and also people who, who ask hard questions, who are not going to be followers, we're going to try and get people who will, you know, be able to come forward and, and speak their mind and, and ask questions, because in the end of the day, you, you want some really good conversation about, you know, within this framework, this is what we're looking for, what do you think? And that does a couple of things, especially with the, with the staff. Whoever we hire needs to ramp up quickly to, to, to know a couple of students, to know, you know, staff members, builds that commitment, builds that communication right out of the box, and that's one of the other reasons this is really important. By the way, the, the student piece, in the past, what I've typically done is involve the students, but get their feedback on the candidates, but the students are not involved in the internal final conversation. I think it's a, it's a bit of a, of a conflict for them, so we value their input. Kids read adults in the building really quickly, and you get some really good, honest feedback, because, you know, usually we ask for somebody who, who's, you know, open, honest, who, who will give us a, a real read of what they see, good, bad, or otherwise. So, so far, we've, we've done well. I think you could do it other ways, I think in this case, this is a, this is a process, and we're hopeful that we'll get one really good candidate who's going to be able to come in and contribute the way that we'd like to.
Second, congratulations. I was privileged to be in Concord a couple of Mondays ago for the ceremony honoring the nominees for the 2014 Teacher of the Year. We have two such people this year, Shannon DuSett from GMS, a grade-one teacher, and Linda Frost, the science teacher and curriculum facilitator who was very recently presenting here to us. So there are two candidates in a field of 32 people, and I have to say, having gone around and looked at all of the presentations of all the people, both of them were very worthy candidates. I had good conversations with both. There's a ton of very talented people represented there, but I have to say, you know, we got a lot of attention from the, the, the people who are doing the screening, stood and talked to our folks for good, long chunks of time, which is usually a sign that you're doing something very innovative. Everybody from state board members to former administrators doing the, doing the screening and the judging, so, you know, I'm hopeful that, that we'll have people moving on to the next round, and, you know, it, it's always difficult to pick one person out of the entire state to be a Teacher of the Year. So just to be nominated really is an honor. And I have to say, as I went around to the 32 booths and talked to the people, I couldn't find a single person who you wouldn't look at and say, this is a real master teacher and somebody who is very good at their craft. So congratulations to, to those two folks. Other things, HR director position has closed, first round of interviews is going to be May 30th.
May 30th?
Sorry, April 30th. Apologize, Tuesday. Yeah, I wrote down the wrong date. I didn't, I didn't misread it, I miswrote it. And with respect to calendar, June 14th is, has been confirmed as a graduation date. Friday, June 21st, a week later, is the last day of school for all others. We had two days that we lost in October, and one non-blizzard-bag day, I believe it was March 8th, was the third day, so that moved us from a Tuesday last day of school to a Friday, and Monday, the 24th, is the teacher workshop day, the last day for teachers. Other than that, we do have on the agenda under the heading, the board meeting calendar. I'm just wondering, we may have to have a conversation on May 8th about whether we'll need an additional meeting. I know that Mr. Martin is anxious to, you know, spend as much time with the board as he can between now and the end of June, because he's going to miss us all.
Tell me which one I can delete.
None of the above. So, just, just so you know, you know, depending on, on what time we get out of here and how we get, how much we get done, there's a good chance that we may be fine for the, the May 29th is, is the next meeting, but if not, we may want to look at May 22nd as an additional date. The 2013-14 board meeting calendar, the, the conversations are about whether or not we get information from the board members about their summer availability to Michelle in the next little while, so we can set some dates.
I thought it was great you weren't going to have this meeting in July and August, September. I was like, wow.
Well...
We've become irrelevant.
So that we can set some tentative dates. And at some point, we'll need to have some conversation about, we're still color-coding our meeting dates, you know, by, I think the, the budget meeting dates need to be identified as, as a separate function, but by and large, we've been, you know, there hasn't been a business-only meeting and a curriculum-only meeting. I mean, one of the major responsibilities of the board is educational programs. So we need a, a relatively brief conversation at some point in time as to whether or not you want to go back to, to, you know, one meeting that's strictly business and one that's more program, or if you want to, you know, get rid of the color coding and basically run board meetings, and whatever's on the agenda is the agenda. I think there's, there's... I think there's value to it.
We always do whatever has to be done.
Yeah.
You gotta vote the color before and say, oh, that's going to be it.
I would, you know, just my experience as a chair is that there are so many things that are moving that, you know, the chair needs to be able to set the agenda with the superintendent and not be color-coded. I mean, we need to be locked into meetings and we can expect on certain meetings we'll have our business, you know, we'll have our business managers report. I mean, again, I firmly believe that, you know, while, again, I'm hoping we'll find a better process with our principals, that they're not coming in and reading a recap of what's occurred for the last 40 days, but they're actually coming in and telling us what's going on in their schools, that impact in improving the education. Because while all that information they bring to that, I think it's great. I think they should continue sending that monthly, you know, to you and you can just send it out to the board. And I'm glad that our programs and our sports programs at all of our schools are very successful. But I really would like to hear the principals start digging down into what they've done in the last 30 days to improve the education process. And that, you know, because if they're coming, if they're coming to us and they're not able to dig down and explain to the school board what they're doing to increase whatever that process is, as a school board member, as a manager, I'd be very concerned about that.
Yeah. The value added or the amount of time taken to have them read to us something that they've already sent to us, the value added is hopefully pretty near zero, other than, you know, if you have them there to have the other conversations and then you can ask questions about X event or whatever, then I think it's probably a better use of time.
And again, I think that, you know, a rotation, you know, you start in September, 1, 2, 3, whichever school you do, and that's the flow of the meetings. And they know that, you know, that's meeting one, I have to come and I have to be prepared to talk to the school board about what's going on in the education process of their schools. And it also gives them the opportunity that if they want to bring along a teacher or teachers that are working and doing something that, you know, we believe or they believe would be, you know, those presentations that various groups brought to us. I mean, you know, the high school, you know, the last group of the high school, you could tell they were the computer artsy group. They were well fine-tuned in that process. But I think that that's how they all should be, coming and talking to us so that they can hear from the school board, from school board members, as I think we did communicate to the CHS presenters, that, you know, we expect the reg to be more aggressive and we hope, we want our kids to be held to a higher standard. And I think that's, you know, I think that's a double-edged sword. You know, some people don't want to do that, some people do want to do that. But I think that if that's the message coming from the board and from the principals and from the SAU, I don't think the parents will be disappointed in that.
That's a good idea. And my work, my level of management has meetings monthly with the C-level team and basically just our objectives the next four weeks, any long-term objectives, and basically how the last four weeks went, stuff like that. I think that'd be a good structure.
With respect to the rest of the calendar, I'm assuming that if we structure a draft calendar with the same meeting schedule as we had this year, and then we'll sit down at some point and say, once we've got the summer stuff in here, then sometime in May or early June, we'll finalize the draft. We may have to modify it as we go, but we need to get the summer nailed down fairly quickly.
Real quickly, in November, are we planning on presenting the school budget to the Budget Committee on the 13th? Steve, did you take a look at that calendar?
I...
Well, I would hope, just because he's going to pass it on to somebody, but, you know.
I think given they're going to have a new business administrator who has not done this budget before, that's rather aggressive.
But I think the 27th is kind of long, to go that long with it, but, I mean, I would...
I would have a tough time making the 13th.
This is set up for budget work sessions to start on the 25th of September and run until the 13th. If we're done by the 13th, they get it the week after. If not, if they're done, if we're done earlier, they can have it earlier.
Well, no, my question is, is you have the 19th and the 21st as budget meeting.
Oh, those Budget Committee.
Well, if they don't have the school board budget, they will not meet on the 19th.
Right. I just did that tentative late.
I do know they'll be on the 21st.
I did that tentative late.
Well, that was my question, is that, are we, you know, if we're going to set that out, you know, if I'm the Budget Committee, which will meet next week, they're going to see that, they're going to want that budget very shortly thereafter the 13th.
Well, I just marked those dates because I figured, let me hold them open in case they decide they want to meet those. They have to let me know if they're going to meet, first of all. So then I can mark those permanently. This was just a draft to see what the board wanted.
Well, they're not going to meet on the 28th. They may meet on the 26th. I don't know about that, but the 19th and the 20th, you know, I know they'll meet on the 21st because I'll be working on the town stuff there. And I just want to make sure that if our budget is ready to give to them, it will give it on the 20th, they at least have an opportunity through the Thanksgiving holiday to begin looking at it before we're actually showing up on the 3rd to do. And since we're going to have a conversation next week with the Budget Committee, I'd like to be able to find out how the board feels about this so that we can give them a general idea of what their, that timeframe will look like.
Right. And that's what this primarily was, to get your feedback, you know, the board's feedback before we put it out to anybody.
I would certainly recommend not showing the 19th because even if the board did have its final session and took votes on the 13th, there is no way that that, even I, would turn it around that quickly so that they would have something in hand with an executive summary to present. 21st is possible, but...
So we have, so we have three schools for, so by the 30th, we could probably be through a lot of our process. I mean, we have the three schools that will present a budget, we have HR, we have, I'm just trying to figure out what the normal...
You have the SAU, you have Building and Grounds, you have Technology, you have Special Education, you've got the three schools, and then there's a few, hence all everything, food service and stuff like that. I think the issue, quite frankly, is usually during the month of October, that's where you get through all of your presentations. Then normally, the first week in November, the superintendent will meet with the administrative team to finalize his recommendations. My expectation is, in order for him to give you a budget to start making decisions on on the 6th, you have, all of the presentations to you really need to be done on the 23rd. There really needs to be a week in between to give the superintendent time to finalize his budget.
So the question is, can we have all the budgets presented to us? First of all, we're just coming back to school, so it's the 25th. I mean, we get, that's a U school board, maybe food services out on the 25th, but it's the 3rd, 9th, 16th, and 23rd enough time for everybody else to go through the process?
My recommendation still is, use October to get all of the presentations. The first week in November, the superintendent and his team finalize the budget. The second and third week, the board makes their decisions, and then we present the budget to the Budget Committee before Thanksgiving. I know the last two years, we've rushed to get it to them earlier, and I want to point out, near the year, did they start working on it until after Thanksgiving?
No, and they're probably not going to start working on it until after December because they're wrapping up the town stuff.
And again, I would err on the part of not trying to rush Frank in trying to work through this process. So my recommendation would be no budget meeting on the 6th, due 13th and 20th for the board's decision on the budgets.
I think, you know, this is a first year for a budget for Lori, first year for a budget here for Scott. I think...
You're also going to have, excuse me, you're also going to have an HR person for the first year trying to figure out how to budget salaries and benefits. So it's going to be...
That's true. But at the same point in time, I think what we'll have to do is, I think I have to do a better job of setting some budget parameters, knowing what this year's budgets are, what the spend rate is, and then so that the principals will have to have, you know, a lot of those more difficult conversations up front. Tom's been through this before, and LMS came up, came in, you know, with a list of things that were all very defensible, but it really wasn't all that onerous a task. And I think what we have to do is, people have to expect, I mean, for Lori to, I mean, she has the most people to speak to. It is the most difficult budget to get ready. But at the same point in time, I think I can make it a much more streamlined process for her if I give her much more guidance about, here's the range of the final budget figure that we're expecting. And unless something unusual happens, then, you know, so she can, she can have a lot more of those conversations up front. And, you know, likewise with some of the other budgets, where really do we expect this to come in? And that should streamline the process somewhat. I do agree with Steve, I'm just saying that I think I could have done a better job of setting parameters for people in year one. Does that make sense?
Well, obviously, the more we streamline everything, the better off we are. You don't end up in the Budget Committee meetings for hours and hours.
I'm with you on that. So I would, my recommendation would be to remove the 19th and 21st from that as far as school board budgets being discussed. Add the 20th. We'll let it flow until, Brian, my recommendation would be until you and Frank and Derek have a conversation on that.
I like Steve's rationale of take a break the 6th and, you know, make the 13th and 20th the two days. And if we do a good job, we might not need the six days scheduled, quite honestly.
I go back and look, this year, there was eight scheduled, but I think we crammed them all into four, the Budget Committee. And they crammed everything into those last, like, two or three meetings, I think, because those people opposite and they kept pushing stuff off and really all the work was done.
I think basically what they did was reviewed everything and they voted.
I think we know what the issues are going to be. What are we going to do with respect to deferred maintenance? How different is the situation? Where are we with Special Education? Are we in a situation where we have some out of district or out of budget expenses that have come up? And other than that, it's, you know, a lot of the same conversations. So the 6th becomes an open date, the 13th and the 20th, and we eliminate the 19th and 21st of November as budget meetings for the, for the school budget, certainly probably will be used for the town budget, and start the town budget process with the Budget Committee on December 3rd.
The school process.
The school process, yes, that's what I meant, sorry.
I think the goal of getting it to the Budget Committee before Thanksgiving is reasonable to give them time to start to work.
Definitely look at it over that long.
While they're giving thanks?
Yeah. Give thanks for itself. Kona Ice fundraiser.
Sure. So I meet with the, I do a parent group, and the parents at the last parent group were very excited about Challenge Day. Their children had come home and said wonderful things. And some parents talked about the adventure program and how they want to continue. They understand that we can't fund everything, so they wanted to know if they could form, you know, like a boosters for Campbell High School to fund these types of programs. And so one of the ideas was Kona Ice. And what happens is the ice truck comes up to the school. So it could happen during finals, it could happen during, you know, when we do our field day, and they sell it and then we make a profit. And so the parents, it was the first idea that they came up with and they wanted to propose it as, because it would be a new fundraiser for us through the school board.
By the way, the feedback from both student, from students, from staff, from parents, was overwhelmingly positive for Challenge Day. I don't think it's something that we're planning on doing every year, but I have to say, I completely...
Every other year, every third year, you know, but we need to start fundraising now, and that's what I told the parents, we need to start fundraising now and...
So would this, so when they pick a date, it would basically be a date where either the kids are already out and about outside or something, or...
Or softball game. So we, they, we would choose, and it's just like, you know, the ice and the cones. And a lot of schools do it, and they've made a lot of money. So it was just the first fundraising idea. They want to form this committee, they all want to support it, but this was their first fundraiser.
Would there be any issues with Kona Ice taking sales from, say, the Booster Club? Because they sell it, probably Italian ice and stuff, too, right?
I don't think the Booster Club runs the concession stand during baseball and softball because there's typically not a big enough crowd.
We're on track. We've got a couple of track mates.
Yep, yep. There were people there who were on the boosters too, so they talked about making sure they coordinated because they wouldn't want to, you know, do anything.
I mean, I would think, what's, you do the carnival thing? I think that would probably be the perfect day.
Perfect day.
Because people are outside anyway, it's not like they have to leave class or go outside to get it. You know, there's the bouncy house and they do trebuchet and all the things they do out in the fields. I guess it's technically a CHS field day, like they have at GMS, just for the bigger kids. I mean, that seems to be something like that would be...
Just softball.
Were they a bouncy house?
I pressed that call in a second. I had to call that in.
No, they have a bouncy house.
At least you have a bouncy house.
How come school board members aren't invited to that?
They are.
Oh, really?
Something to look forward to, Todd.
I always wanted a bouncy house.
I didn't say it was a giant one. It's just a bouncy house.
For the restrictions to students that are not taught.
Any more questions on that Kona Ice fundraiser?
I make, you know, it sounds like a great idea.
Yeah.
We just need one more warm day this year.
Yes. One more.
Sounds like a great fundraiser. Minimal effort, you know?
And I was just so excited with how many parents came and, you know, how excited they were and how they wanted to support the schools. It was very heartwarming.
Put them on call for graduation night if it's hot.
That's a really good idea.
I'll second your motion.
Do you want to have them come or do you want to approve this tonight?
I'm making a motion to approve it, but John already said...
I tried about watching.
I didn't hear you make a motion.
I said I'll motion it and John's...
Yeah, you didn't quite get it out, but...
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
All's better. Post stained, glasses 500. Weather beacon ice. School board comments?
You got to make sure I know when it is so I can bring Kylie. Because if you have it and she didn't get some...
We're going to be on vacation.
Well, that's okay, I'm on vacation, but...
School board comments? First one was just, last meeting, we talked about having legal counsel in here just to go over things at Legislative House. Michelle called and I think confirmed May 29th.
I, he can make the, he can make May 29th, Attorney Graham. He can't make the 15th and the 22nd. So it would be an hour close session, depending on what time you want to, you want to hold it, you know, want to have it. Or you can, my suggestion with Dr. Carter was you could move the 29th meeting to the 22nd and just have Gordon come on the 29th.
When are you doing this?
Because it's such a long span between meetings, the 8th to the 29th. But that's your choice?
That just means Derek gets that one of 11 o'clock meetings on the 29th.
I like the 29th, and then if we need a 22nd, we can just do that separately.
What are, what's the extra meeting that you're, that you're considering we may need? Is that more about more of the-
That was because of that.
That was because of that.
Oh, yeah. Could everyone make 5:30 to the 29th, that stuff? All week, right?
That might not be a bad idea.
That Monday is-
Or Monday.
I'm fine. Why don't they come in at 5:30 if everyone else is?
Yeah, 22nd might, is iffy for me. I have to make some college visits.
Should I make a, make it 5:15 instead of 5:30, so that everyone can change to set the room up from 6:15 to 6:30?
Sure. Any objection to that?
No.
5:15 it is on May 29th. Any other school board comments? I guess I'll say, too, I came this weekend for the, which was later run, which is put on by the LMS cross-country team. I think it's like a third year I've been to it. Always very, very well-run. Kids always have a good time, they have little mini races and stuff like that, so just wanna thank LMS for another good later run. I'm sure they've raised a bunch of money.
I wanted to thank the Booster Club for the, they had comedy night on Saturday night at Talent Hall. Over 200 people, three great comics, and, you know, the, the two hours before the comics went on was almost as fun as the, the two hours that the comics were on. And I had never been to one before, because there was always a conflict, and it, it's just a great time, they did a great job putting it on. I know they raised a ton of money. You know, they had silent raffles, and they had 50/50, and, you know, they, they sold over 200 tickets, so that was, it was nice to see the Booster Club have a successful event.
Excellent.
I think LMS had their opening day last Thursday, even though it was a few days late. But they had their opening day drinks and popcorn and Cracker Jacks at, at LMS last Thursday.
Any more comments?
CHS proposed schedule?
Okay, so before we start, I just have a couple announcements, too. So tomorrow night, we have our All As celebration, and it's at 6:30. I know Mr. Miller will be there, because his daughter is being recognized, and Dr. Cochran's going to be the guest speaker. Yesterday, we also did our kneecap recognition for students with proficient and professional distinction, which the numbers keep growing, which we're very excited about. And finally, today was a very exciting day at Campbell High School, because we had two students, Sean Berry and Brandon O'Keefe, who received $1,500 scholarships each, and the prize control showed up here. And what happened was our Director of Guidance, Lisa Petrie, sat in front of the calf and had kids register on IamCollegeBound.org. She, you know, as they were going into lunch, she'd get over here and register. And we had two students, we went to their classrooms, we gave them the big, well, first of all, we told them that they won a T-shirt, and they were all clapping, they were so happy. And then we told them that they won, and they were so happy with the T-shirt, they were so cute, but then we told them they won $1,500. So that was just a, a great celebration for us today.
And the parents' class.
Not only the T-shirt.
And for all the parents who are watching, you can still go on, you know, they, they, even underclassmen, they can get iPads, since the seniors will get the money, but you can go on. There are certain things you can do, and it's just to get kids to, to get into the, you know, mood of, of what college looks like, what financial aid looks like. So everyone should be doing that and registering, and they do drawings every single month, so we can still have more winners. But to have two winners was very exciting. Okay, so the proposed schedule, we talked about, but I wanted to go back to our teachers, because this is gonna be a pilot next year, and it's gonna look different than this year, because it'll be an A period day on Monday, then Tuesdays will always be a day one, Wednesdays will always be a day two. We talked about it at the last school board meeting, but I asked if we could just have a little more time, because I wanted to make sure that the teachers were still on board, because we had discussed it last year, we researched it again. You know, the majority of the teachers are all on board, they discussed the reasons why they thought it would be something they would like to try. It is change, and so I, I just need for you to approve it again.
Lori, you have concerns with Wednesday being day two, I guess? Always having the 22-minute advisory?
That's something that we can, that we can switch, we can move the 22 to Tuesday, you know, I mean, like, we can always-
I just mean, it always would be day two, with some classes getting shorted.
Right, and, and the way we do it now is, when it goes to nicer weather, we actually have two 22s, and we do, in the winter, we do 10s. And then we move advisories based on if we have, like, for example, the celebration of the kneecap day, we'll have a longer advisory, because, you know, we wanna make sure that we, we do it. So it's very flexible, that, that period's always flexible.
Yeah, it is a point well taken, though.
Yes, it is.
Because we need to set the expectation that it's gonna be either Tuesday, Wednesday, or Wednesday, Thursday with the long alternate weeks, so that you don't continually short the same-
It's also the, Wednesday's also the one, isn't, Wednesday's the day that we come in late? Four times a-
All of the late arrivals are on Wednesdays.
Yes, delayed on Wednesdays.
So, so again, that, that class schedule is going to be impacted. So you may need to adjust that across two different days-
True.
-so that you're not always impacting day two's learning experience.
One of the advantages of the schedule is that in a five-day week, teachers get to see the students three times and vice versa. And so there is a, a real advantage to that piece. There's also some flexibility. Most of the holidays that we have tend to be Mondays, and so you still end up with a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, they're, all teachers see them, them two days. But it does also mean that, that if you have, something happens on two Wednesdays in a row, you can just throw in an extra day, too, with some notice, and so you can, you can balance it out. So it is easy to, to adjust in that way.
And that's what most-
Those are, those points are both-
Do it, yet they use that Monday, so if they've had, you know, a number of snow days on day one, then they'll take the Monday, you know, they'll put out an alert now, and they'll move the Monday to be the day one, and they won't run any A period. So it works, you know, really well.
Still only 22-minute lunches.
Say 32 minutes. Wait, yeah, the first one looks like just the middle, just the middle one. Interesting.
57 and, well, 23-minute lunch.
It's, it's a lot better than when I first came, when we had, you know, almost 600 students, because then, you know, they were barely getting through the line, and the bell was ringing. And now that we've lost, you know, some population, everyone's getting through the lunch line, and they just don't have a lot of social time. They have to go in and eat.
How does that work, so they go, so if you have English C block, you're in English from 10:57 to 12:49, but then you leave for some portion? So say the middle lunch, you leave in halfway, eat lunch and come back?
So, yeah, so we have to decide on who gets, um, some, some classes will volunteer, but some classes can't be split, you know?
We're doing a lab like biology.
Right, if you have a biology lab, you can't leave the lab, so we have to, you know, look at the schedule and, and balance that out. No one really likes, you know, having that break, so everybody who has a study hall has it, you know, and then classes that can't.
Would there be any, I'm imagining it was looked at, but what if you went with fewer students to two lunches that were longer?
We'd be close, at this point in time, I think it would be too hard.
Yeah, I guess you would still be taken away from instruction.
No, because if you take, you take it, you just split the 15 minutes across two lunches, it's still, but it-
I'm thinking you would take the 22 minutes and split it, so you'd end up with a 33-minute lunch.
Because you have-
But then you have 11 minutes lost each day.
You got an hour and 52 minutes.
But they're not-
Right, so you would lose-
But you're not, but they're not in lunch, they're only in lunch for 22 minutes. We don't need debate here. I'm just thinking out loud. I'll make a motion to approve the modified schedule for next year.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Um, I'm assuming the conversations that, that Lori had with the staff satisfy the contract language for a change in schedule?
It, it doesn't change teacher overall responsibility.
Okay.
Um, there's been certainly no disagreement.
Teachers were really positive.
LAI.
It's, it, the Monday, from everything we know about the Monday, the Monday is, is a really hard day for teachers, because there's a lot of transitions, but it's better for students. And a lot of our AP teachers spoke in favor of it, because if they have a snow day down now, they might see the students just once a week, and that's really difficult. So the, the teachers are willing, as a pilot, you know, we wanna look at it, go, you know, next year, I might be back here saying, you know, we loved it, or we'd like to-
We hate to go back to that.
He's like, what are we thinking?
I just know that in the contract, they can impact bargaining change to block scheduling, so as long as we don't think there's gonna be a change to the overall workload, then.
Eight, it's still the, the same five out of eight load with the, uh-
One prop.
With the supervisory for, for teachers who are, who qualify. So I, I don't see it as a, as a change in that structure. I'm sure if there's another opinion, we would hear from it. Hear about it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stand? Harry's 5-0-0.
Derek's only a half hour behind.
Do you want me to stay? Do you want me to stay? Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Mr. Martin, business administration report.
Um, it was sent out. I actually got it out early. This is my one slow month of the year, where I can actually do my job in 40 hours. So you've had plenty of time to read it.
You'll have to change that.
Oh, you were leaving, that's right. Um, we awarded the, our F P for our new data communications, actually, we signed the contract with FairPoint for our new data communications telephone service, and we awarded the contract for athletic trainer services to New Hampshire Musculoskeletal Institute, also known as Safe Sports, also known as Apple Sports. I'm currently working with them to finalize a contract. I mentioned the safety committee met, that's on the agenda, so I won't cover that. We were pleasantly surprised when we received our final adequacy payment, and it did not include the $98,000 reduction. I actually talked to Ron McLeer from New Hampshire Department of Education last Friday at an Intra-ASBO meeting, and I actually said, geez, Ron, I apologize, I missed your memo when you told us we were getting the full amount. And his comment was, at, because I never believe anything when revenue, until the person who's giving me the check says it's coming. He said, no, you didn't miss it. He said, what I did is, the governor signed it, and I processed everyone's check the same day, before they changed their mind. So he apologized for not giving us a heads up, but that was a pleasant surprise, because that $98,000 added to the unanticipated revenues. And today, I got another surprise, I met with Primex, and they gave us some good news as part of their premium holiday. We'll be getting a $28,000 refund next year on workers comp, which, as we're doing with health insurance, we're taking in as other revenue as a refund for prior year expenditures. It turns out, I, I missed it, or actually, when Jody paid the invoice, we actually got $20,000 this year. And we just paid the invoice, so there's, there's actually another $20,000 plus that I have to put into unanticipated revenues for this year as well. So while the budget is really tight, we will clearly be returning $200,000 to the taxpayers, most of which is gonna be the unanticipated revenues.
Steve, does, is the $60,000, does that include what we authorized last meeting?
Yes, that is net of that. We, we are doing another, our usual April forecast, I did, I did move it out a couple of weeks since we had already done one. So by mid-May, I'll have a more accurate feel. By then, the schools only have five, six weeks left, so I've asked them to make sure any major purchases they accomplish by this Thursday. So I'll have a better feel for that. But it is looking, again, that I'm still looking at about a $60,000 under spending in the budget. I thought it was gonna be a little higher, because I found out we were able to bring one out-of-district student back in district until yesterday, when we met, and Devin told me that's another one going up, so.
So you go over, so you had $20,000 in workers comp and $98,000 in, in student aid was the other?
Well, we had unanticipated revenues before. The two new pieces of information this month was the $98,000 inadequacy-
Mm-hmm.
-that was fully paid.
That was originally in the budget that was taken out when we were told that it was an error in the Department of Education.
Right. We went down to 95 at one point, didn't we? We were expecting 95 percent. And then they said, no, we're gonna get more than 95, but not get 100. Yeah, then they came back and they gave us an exact dollar, which was about, just under $98,000. And then, I know Frank Byron, and we knew it was going through the State House to fully fund that. But again, I don't take anything as, I didn't know the governor had actually signed it yet, and until, and we get electronic funds transferred, so literally the next day, actually the day, I think it was the day the governor signed it, or the next day, we actually got the notification of the payment.
So you had the $98,000, and I could say $20,000 on workers comp from this year.
That's not in the number yet, I have to, I have to move that into revenue.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the numbers together, so that I can share them with the Budget Committee next year.
Right now, we're showing about $136,000 in unanticipated revenue. That will probably end up around, end the year on about 175, 180.
Right.
Because I'm, I expect we will get some more Medicaid money and catastrophic aid money as well.
And then another $60,000, you expect an un-
Well, as of now, it's looking around $60,000 as an underspend to the budget. Again, short of any surprises happening, which hopefully won't.
Now, just in case you're in too happy a mood, we'll know a little bit more for the meeting in May, but it looks as though we may have some out-of-budget sped costs to absorb next year. So not, not the order of magnitude of, of this year.
Thank you.
But-
Did you say thank you?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I heard the you, I wasn't sure what the first word was.
I mean, this is, the IEPs are written in basically a, a six, eight-week chunk, and so this is the real, real first cycle with, you know, Devin and, and what I would refer to as, as a higher level of, of compliance. And so, and, and again, some of it is, is absolutely random, as always. But there will, there will be a little bit of sticker shock, but as I say, not nearly so much as last year. We also have, this impacts the budget to some extent, as, as more information is coming out about the Affordable Healthcare Act.
You will miss me next year.
Which, which PPAC, which of course, Mr. Martin refers to, the Unaffordable Healthcare Program.
I think you said Medicare, too.
We've gotten some clarification about how calculations are to be done of hours per week and who qualifies. And the most recent clarification had to do with how that was calculated, and unless there is a break in service of more than four weeks, then it's calculated the, across the average of the time served. So we talked about reducing pairs, six-hour pairs to five and a half hours, to make sure that they would be under the 30-hour minimum in any week period. The reality is, the calculated period for them would be from their first day of work in August to the- in August to the last day of work in June, calculated on a weekly basis. That means that within there, you have your February break, a week at Christmas, and a week in April, plus all of the other holidays. So, that there will be many weeks, if somebody worked six hours for five days, they would be at the 30, but by the time you divide it over that time period, we should be able to keep paras as six-hour days, based on our current understanding.
Keyword there being current.
Current, yeah.
Well, this is supposed to be the, the final guidance.
Actually, I-
And I have a bridge nowhere.
Dr. Cutlow, the slide that we looked at, that Devin cut-
You mean Dr. Cochrane?
I'm sorry. Dr. Cochrane?
I was trying to-
Can we bring her back as a consultant? I was trying to figure out where it came from. I'm tired, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I clicked on the URL they gave us for the backup of this slide, and it says, propose to them, ah! So, it's not, that's where they're leaning, but it's not, as John said, it's not casting concrete.
Don't bank your life on it.
Yeah, no.
We won't bank our budget on it, that's for sure.
The proposal also indicates that it may, it would involve all forms of employment.
Yes.
Which would mean that a para at 30 hours a week, if divided by whatever, would be okay, but what if they now coach one season? Would-
Oh.
Or two seasons, or three seasons? Would a 30-hour week divided by then and add coaching responsibilities then push them to benefits eligible?
So, why don't, why, why aren't those positions 1099s? Why are they not, why aren't those an independent, why are, why are coaching positions not independent contract positions?
Liability.
Well, first of all, a 1099 contractor technically cannot supplant your line of business, and these are legitimate district operations. The second issue is clearly liability.
The third is the contract says they're stipend positions paid by the district.
Yeah.
So, it's in, it's in the contract.
Well, I mean, they're, they're paid by the district, whether they're an independent contractor or stipend, they're still going to be paid by the district.
But the 1099, you don't, then you don't do retirement, you don't do any of those things that happen right now.
But they're, but they're, they're not a, they're not a, they're not a, a education-driven position, they're a co-curricular driven.
Well, you also cannot have a salary employee on a W-2 also getting paid on a 1099, all right? If you have an employee, that's why we ran into the self-funded-
And they also have to have an EIN and all that, insurance.
Further compounding the healthcare issue is, so the fact that we have an agreement that says so many practices, all right, most of the coaches spend more time than that. So, how would that play out with the existing proposals? So, still many things to, to fall into place, but we're, I think, pretty much-
So, so let-
Up on, on what's known at this point.
So, a position, a para, let's, a position that someone who's a para, let's say they decide that they're going to coach football, could basically, by doing that, bring their hours for football to a full-time position?
I mean-
Which in time, we would have to also include benefits for that employee.
Just health insurance.
Well, that's what I mean, health insurance.
Or pay a penalty.
Now, you could offer that class of employee health insurance, and basically say you have to pay 100% of it. The problem you run into is if they then go to the health exchange, because ours would be considered a Cadillac plan, okay, you would end up paying a fine on it, so there would be a cost. You have to be determined how much.
They're going to get you a medical-
Well, $4,000 better than $18,000. I mean, the key is that you're trading $3,000 or $4,000 for, you know, 15, 16, 17, and $18,000.
But again, like I just said, even though they're comfortable that this is what it's going to look like, the, the regs are not yet casting concrete.
What's the time limit for that?
This was only, this was only several of the 11,000 pages of-
Well, it was funny because there's a-
It'll all change afterwards, anyway, so.
A prominent leader who led and helped write the Affordable Care Act, who actually spoke to the Health and Human Services Director and told him that the program was headed to the cliff, and he's come, he's come to realize that it's not going to work, and that was quite an interesting exchange that they had back and forth.
It's not going to work, and it's going to cost a lot more money.
Just do the math, just do the math.
Math does not work.
Steve, if you're in some sense, is, any way you can give us a list for the May meeting of any high priority needs the district might have? So, you can start talking about it before, you know, June? So, we're forecasting, what, $60,000 in the year-end fund balance? I'm guessing you're going to have wants and needs towards the end of the year.
So, if you want anything encumbered?
Well, here's, here's the thing, I think what I have to do is take a look at the safety report to see if there's some things that we can do in there, that's probably the highest priority that we have, and I think there may be some, some things that we can do in there. The hard part is going to be finding a consultant who's available to come in and, and work with us. Some of them are pretty straightforward, you know, the high school has a panic button that goes directly to the police department, I don't believe the other schools do. So, so there's some things in there that we'll try to get to ASAP as, as, you know, potential things that we'd really like to take-
Well, I saw in the, just in the paper yesterday, Bedford put out a request for proposal for district-wide camera systems. And I know that's one of the issues on there. You know, so I would encourage Steve to contact Bedford and try to get a copy of their, because they're wanted middle or end of May so that decisions can be made on that process. And I, and I would say that, you know, if we're going to look at that, that, you know, I don't know if we need a consultant to come in all of a sudden, except to say that, you know, we want to upgrade the system here, we want, and, you know, I don't know, unless you think you need a consultant.
The reason for the consultant is having, having actually gone through this when we put the cameras in here. You actually need someone who understands safety, because when we were walking through this building, the, now, we didn't use an outside consultant, we used a vendor, but they basically pointed out every place where a camera should be, and it was more money than we had, and they were able to basically say, okay, this is less. You can't go out to bid until you tell the bidders what they need to install, and you really need someone to come in and say, okay, in Griffin, you know, these are the 28 cameras in the location you needed, okay, these are the doors you want to have electronically locked. None of us spoke, even I don't even feel comfortable, quite frankly, to put out a bid spec. And the problem you have is I could then go out and basically have three vendors come in, and, okay, this is what we want, cameras, this and that, give us a quote, but now, I have no assurance that I'm comparing apples to apples, because one guy could be cutting 20% of the cameras out, telling me, oh, you don't need it, when in fact, someone who's very knowledgeable of safety would say, you are. I mean, I got to tell you, it took the students less than a week to figure out where the cameras weren't in this building. And the, the company that came in, when he was pointing out where the cameras needed to be, and where we decided we had not to put them, he told us exactly what was going to happen, and it was less than a week.
Maybe we should have the students tell us what it is. Save us a lot of time.
You might get the wrong answer. You don't need any. Just one at the main entry. So, that's why you want the consultant, is really-
Well, you know, maybe that's one of those things that, that, you know, by May 18, you guys have to have a, an answer and an idea what it's going to cost, because it's not in the budget for next year.
You will, you will not have enough money to do things like cameras and-
Well, maybe you get the consultant, because at some point in time, see, the key is, even if we don't do it, we need to do it, in the sense that-
They have a cost.
We have to be able to have a cost and a solution to go to the voters if we decide to go to the voters, or we are, got decided, it's either part of the budget or part of a warrant article in next budget. It can't come out of next year's budget because the funds aren't, aren't there. So, if you have some end-of-the-year funds now, we know that a consultant can come in, and it's going to cost X amount of dollars, then the board can make a decision of whether or not they want to move forward on that, to get that information captured. And then we have the summer, which is a great time to put stuff out for bid, because you don't, you know, you know, the, the private sector doesn't take that time off, they're looking for these types of things, and they can come into the schools when there's not a lot of people, you don't have to come after hours and come during normal business hours, and they can walk the schools and get that, that information, and, and do their measurements and stuff that they want to do to give us that, that price. And then, we have the information as we move into budget season and into warrant articles and stuff.
If we could at least use a little bit of the year-end fund balance to do that study, to bring in the consultants to look at, what are the options, what are the various levels of cost, to be able to, to be having intelligent conversations about, you know, what we'd like and what we can afford, I think is clearly worth it at this point in time.
I mean, there's that discussion, and I, and Steve, you tell me if we can do it or not, but I firmly believe that the school due information needs to get done. And we can continue, put it in, cut it, put it in, cut it, put it in, cut it, never be, it's never going to get done, is, it, it, you know, it'll end up being, you know, the, well, it'll never get, never get done through the budget season. So, that's another one of those things that can be encumbered to get it done, it, you know, it needs to get done, and it needs to get done before we all of a sudden aren't tracking and determining what needs to be repaired and stuff like that, so.
Well, I will tell you, you would be on extremely thin ice to encumber a service that's going to be done the following year. You have much stronger footing to encumber money to, for instance, purchase and install a security system. I mean, the board can vote whichever way they want, but I will tell you, the, the auditors more readily will accept an accumrance to purchase something, because quite frankly, I can issue a purchase order for that. But a service, then, then it really looks like you're just trying to hold money back.
Well, not if you, not if you, not if you do a purchase order for the service, would it be?
We have to be real cautious here, because I think, quite frankly, the number one priority is for Devin and I to transition out of here. If we bogged down with projects, now you don't have us transitioning to our replacements, and that would probably cause you more harm.
Well, on the, on the school due part of it, this is, this should be, okay, this is part of our budget, so 90% of the work on that should have already been accomplished. I mean, this is not, this isn't, this isn't a lot of work on the school due part of it, it's basically determining whether or not it's a discussion the board can have, an accumrance they can have that's appropriate, to get that work completed and get that information updated. I mean, isn't that, and that, and that's a, yes, a service, but it's coming in and doing a complete review of everything that's in the three schools and putting it in school due, isn't that correct? Isn't that what that, that $35,000 was for?
Yeah, but here's, here's your problem, I would not feel comfortable in encumbering that until, quite frankly, the last day of the year. I mean, if I'm, if I'm still looking at roughly $60,000 with a month and a half left, I'm not, I'm not going to recommend you encumber anything, because I don't know what's going to happen. Now, historically, encumbered POs, they free up. In fact, sped is usually the biggest contributor to that. So, I, I already went to Nancy, and I said, Nancy, I said, do you have any gut yet of how much you're going to be freeing up? And she said, this year, I'm doing what you asked me to do, I'm freeing up as I find out about it. So, I'm looking at, okay, so not only am I looking at $60,000, but I don't have sped there that's going to free up a bunch of money for me. It's really tight. Now, I could end up getting a forecast back in a month, and it's up to $140,000, and then I'll sit here and give you different advice. You know, at $60,000, we're cutting it really close. The bottom line, though, is the board, quite frankly, can do anything they want. The issue is, the issue is, is how, historically, I've been able to sweet-talk the auditors in, in justifying what you've done.
I'm going to get that off and talk to videotape.
No, there's, there are ways you can explain your actions that make it more justifiable to auditors.
Well, Dr. Cochrane, I think that those are two, two issues that the SAU needs to have a discussion to determine what direction, and that they should give the board. I mean, if you guys come back and say, we're not going to find a, somebody to come take a look at what we need as far as security, based on the suggestions that we're going to review later, and we're going to continue to put off the, the school due process, we're just continuing to put off until something goes, and instead of, it's that, it's that process.
The only thing, John, is, even if we do this, and school due tells us that, you know, the GMS parking lot needs to be redone, so we put that in the budget, and it just gets struck out again.
Well, I, I understand.
Is it going to accomplish what we want, is what I'm just questioning?
Well, it is, because the only way you're ever going to get to a point where you can create a capital improvement budget is to know the process that you need for your capital improvements. And, and that's what school due supposedly is going to create, because it's going to go in and it's going to say, in Campbell High School, you have a boiler that is 15 years old, and the expected life of that thing is 18 years. So, in three years, you need to realize you probably should expect an expenditure of X amount of dollars on that.
And you put it in the budget, and then the budget committee takes it out.
Well, no, it isn't, because, because the budget committee takes it out, because you have no concrete information to give them.
All right, I'll give you that, but-
We're doing this, we're rolling the dice that says our boilers are going to last forever until they go.
But you know what, we put the GMS parking lot in there last year, clearly that needs to be redone.
Have you seen it lately?
Clearly, it does.
So, I-
And, and I did both take it out, but it is-
It's a quandary, John, I-
It is, but it, but it is, it, it, we're never going to get to the point to create the capital improvement plan until we do the first step.
Maybe it should be a warrant article.
It, you know, it can be a warrant article, but, but inevitably, spending that money is going to save you money. Now, I understand that's a hard way to look at it, but it's going to spend you money, because inevitably, what's going to happen is repairs are going to occur. Whatever those repairs are going to come, and they're going to come at the, at the sacrifice of other things that are in our budget, because we don't have a plan. We are, we are running our, we are running our largest assets in this town with no maintenance plan.
I, I hear you, John.
And we, and we-
I would rather not-
Because we don't want to spend $35,000 to get the planning place.
But I would rather not take that money, I would rather have the town endorse it, therefore, the budget committee knows that this-
Okay, they voted to build the schools however many years they voted to build it, and with that comes the responsibility of maintaining the buildings.
I understand that, John.
Every time, every time you want to maintain the buildings, you can't go back to the voters and say, do you want us to maintain the voters, the buildings this year or not? Either we're going to maintain the assets and take the beating from the voters, or we're not. And we're going to take the beating then, because education's going to suffer, because we spent $150,000 fixing the assets, because one year, a lot of them broke. And that's the wrong, you would not run a private business that way. And that's what everybody beats us up with, is how would a private business do it? Private business would spend the money, get the plan in place, and then go to the voters and say, this is the capital improvement plan, you need to vote on it this way, and this is how it's going to be phased out over the years.
Did we have that in the budget last year?
We did have it in the budget.
Did we?
Yeah, thirty-five thousand, I think.
Right next to the G M S parking lot.
The first hundred thousand that went.
I think, I think we left it and it got cut by the budget committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, we left, both of them.
I don't know. I don't know.
Natalie, our rep didn't do a good job explaining that last year, but we've got a different rep this year.
Rep got mowed over last year.
You have Chris on your side on the parking lot.
Is it a concern that we only have right now like sixty thousand dollars to carry over?
No, we're not carrying over.
I'm sorry, not carried over, sixty thousand additional.
The concern is there's, yeah, sixty thousand that's not...
Like Steve said, in a month...
Sixty thousand that really belongs to the taxpayer.
I understand, but it may end up costing taxpayers a lot more money.
I'm just saying.
My question is, but Steve said that in one month, you might have a much better picture of the bigger surplus, correct?
Or, or a picture of a smaller one.
So I understand, so in one month, as far as this conversation...
It could change drastically, yes. Sixty thousand is not a lot.
I agree with John. I mean, for better maintenance, it is going to save you a lot of money. So if you can find out right now what thing's going to cost you or what you can do, that's like an ace in the pocket and you're one step ahead of the game. So I think really, like in a month from now, you find out what is the real surplus and have a better idea.
Probably won't, you probably won't have the true idea of what the surplus is. Well, you'll have it on our last meeting in June, but the meeting on the twenty-ninth of, of, of May will give us a pretty good idea of where we're going.
I always say, you know, more in August.
After the audit is resolved.
Well, I mean, it's always varies by a little bit. We could say we're going to have twenty-five thousand left and we have two-twenty-eight or we have two-seventy-two or, you know, there's something.
One of the ways to proceed really is to say, what are the highest value deferred maintenance that, that we should be looking at? What are the ones that if we defer will have the greatest increase in cost down the road to fix it and cost some of that out and have ready for the end of May? Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. The other thing with respect to the safety would be to look at, if, if we can find a consultant that we can get, that would be great. If not, what we can do is look at what are some of the other things that we have on this list that when you talk to Mike Corle, the S R O, and talk to, to, you know, people like Joe O'Brien are pretty much no brainers, you know, can we, can we get some quotes on those and get back to the board by May twenty-ninth?
If the board is okay with us going the consultant group, my first call would be to Greg Champlain at the New Hampshire Department of Emergency Management. He may in fact be able to help us or at least he can give us. I will tell you, the New Hampshire Aswell Forum, there are a number of districts looking for safety consultants to do exactly the same thing and there's actually not a lot around. There's one superintendent actually talking to a company in Texas.
Well, yeah, I think...
So Dr. Cochran's comment of if you can find one is lots of companies will come in and do it for you, but they're not going to come in and do it for you when you're going out to bid. They'll, you know, you're basically looking, they're looking for a commitment that, okay, you've already made the decision, you're hiring us and that will come in and help you do it. And that's another option the board could take.
That's not, that's not the most cost effective option.
No, that's why you want...
There are some things here that we, I think we can all identify. The, the committee did some good work. Communication with the portables is crucial. It can be accomplished in, in, in a variety of ways. If you wanted to go with the more expensive walkie-talkies and make sure that you have communication between the building, that's fine. They have a certain lifespan. So what are the other options? But I think there are some things in here that we can come up with, with known costs or things that we think are relatively high on that priority list. And we'll ask Mr. Martin, if you get ahead, hold of Matt Bennett, and see if we can look at the, uh, maintenance stuff that we think is the highest value in terms of if we can get some things done this year. Uh, windows at G M S, you know, can we do an extra class of windows because we typically do a room a year? But knowing that every year we late, that we wait to do those windows, it's, it's more expensive to get them done. So let's see if we can come back with a prioritized list of some, some small projects on that front.
My, I'll tell you right now, my first priority would be the G M S parking lot because that's also a safety concern. The windows, you're losing energy money. Someone could slip and fall and get seriously hurt.
I think it was worse than that. It was a rough winter.
It is, it was a rough winter.
Okay.
So that would be my recommendation as the first one.
The middle parking lot. We actually were going to do it in two, over two years. We were going to do the parking lot aspect of it and then we were going to do the circle and the bar parking lot expansion on the hatch.
Yeah, I think that was the board, which I thought was a good compromise. Let's just do the really worst part first, but then that got cut as well.
I think so.
Good job, Trish.
So what, you know, sometimes I come up with them.
And we would have gained, I think, seventeen spots too, which is great because obviously they're parking along over there.
Well, they had those seventeen spots and just not really paved over very well.
They lasted very... Did you, did you want to go through this actual list or?
No.
Okay. The one thing I didn't notice on here, I'm not sure if it was ever talked about at the safety committee, was, um, my wife brought up to me when she was leaving the, the mother son movie night that there's no lights there. You walk out that building at night and it's pitch black.
Yeah.
It's not like C H S was actually, there's actually lights. Was that ever brought up at the safety committee?
It was not.
I just wonder if it's a, I think there's lights, it's just whether there's, what the timer is set for.
By the way, Jack Pinciero was able to get the C H S flashing lights.
I saw that.
Working.
I know, I noticed those working, yeah.
We may get a bill in the mail later.
Jason's already sending me more bills.
It's very, um... Did you send, did you send the over, out over to, uh, tell me about Pierre, do his magic out there?
Uh, we had a brief conversation about that, but it was five in the morning, so, you know, I, it was a pretty short one.
Just one comment, um, number ten, request more school resource officer support from the town. I'm pretty sure if we do a little research, we're going to find a warrant article that funds a school resource officer one hundred percent of the time that the town has...
Neglected to...
Has not freed that person up to be here one hundred percent of the time. Really? I'm pretty sure there is a warrant article that said, will you support the addition of a police officer as the school resource officer? And I think it was on the town ballot ten years ago, maybe? Maybe not even that far.
I don't remember now, Mike.
The budget committee, the budget committee was under the impression, Michelle Strager for tomorrow, is that it was...
I'm pretty sure it was a warrant article to have that person one hundred percent of the time and then when they didn't get new officers approved, they started saying, well, we're going to need them half time to do patrols or they're going to do patrols on the weekend.
I don't think the person does patrols.
Yeah, they're retirees that are...
Retirees that can work thirty-two hours, I think.
I'm saying, I think if we go back and look at the warrant article, we might want to have a conversation with the selectmen to say, this was requested by the people and we're not fulfilling the will of the voter as, as we hear every week.
And there, I had a, I had a conversation with, uh, uh, Jason and Frank, I think, and about, um, and they, and I think they talked to Chief O'Brien about putting police officers in the schools instead of at the police station. So like they had paperwork and stuff like that. All they really need is a desk and a computer.
Like a neighborhood station.
And so they would come, and I actually learned about it because I, a town in Georgia did that. They were sending their police officers into the schools to do their paperwork and stuff.
So it's kind of...
So they're in the schools, you know, they're in a very, wherever, you got to have space for them. I mean, you got to be able to have a...
Where we put them.
Um, I mean, you know, we just got to figure, figure that out, but, but, um, but they're in the schools.
But they're in portables.
And, um, you know, they go and they walk around and, and, but they're in the schools. And, you know, the, you know, they've got paperwork that they got to do and, and the, um, the town and the police seem very receptive to that idea. So that may be something to have a conversation with to find out where they're, where they're at with that, with that idea.
It's like the neighborhood watch thing at Walmart where they've got a police officer that's in there part of the day doing whatever he needs to do and it's a benefit to Walmart. They have a policeman there and... And when the resource officer is in this building and you see a police car parked out front, that's a deterrent, I would think.
That is a deterrent. And that probably, yeah, that probably is more of a deterrent than anything else.
Maybe we should just buy the police cars.
There you go, save money that way.
We could get a picture.
Probably get a couple used ones.
That's right. You know, maybe the town will sell them to us for a buck, you know?
Co-curricular program review.
Yeah, I just wanted to talk, I, back in budget season, we talked about wrestling and hockey and, and that sort of thing. And I'd indicated that I thought it would be worthwhile prior to this fall's budget to sit down and have a look at extracurricular programs, starting with the assumption that we're either at the same budget figure or very close to it and say, you know, do we have the right mix of programs to benefit all of our students? So athletics has done, uh, their work. They have given me reports that look at costs for varsity teams. Uh, we can break it down. Uh, so if there's a case where there's a varsity and a J V, we can actually break it down, you know, what would the savings be if you, if you eliminated a, a J V sport? And typically it's not that large because, uh, there's no transportation costs because they travel with varsity. But there's the ability to do that analysis. Um, but what I thought we would do is put on, uh, an agenda item to have a broader discussion about, you know, what sort of input process would we have, focus groups or surveys or whatever to get some, some conversation. One of the things that I've been waiting for that just got sent, uh, in the last week is a report that looks at the, uh, C H S athletics teams and looks at how many one sport, two sport and three sport athletes participate by sport. So there may be, if, if we do end up reshuffling some things, you know, uh, I think the higher priority are sports that have a higher percentage of one season athletes as opposed to three season athletes because we want as many students to participate as we can. So if you look at that, you know, what's, what's the feedback? What would the options be? Um, and, and just have a broad conversation with the community that would allow them to give input on what they see as a value of, of these programs. And then take a step back. The fact, for example, that wrestling was not included in the very first year, but in the, in that very first year of the high school's existence, they were told that they would get back to them soon, you know, and look at, at including it. I, I, to some extent, because of, of that decision made then, they seem to be on the outs. So I think we need to basically say, let's look at all programs. Let's look at the value of those programs. Um, I, when, when I think that, I believe that when, when wrestling was not funded, it was not people discriminating against men in tights. I think it was actually a boat-a-budget thing, which means that, you know, we can take a look at the program and say, what's the best way to serve our kids? Who are our kids? What are their needs? Um, and, and we do have a really high percentage of kids involved in athletics, uh, which is a very good thing. Um, you know, the other option would, would, would be to, I mean, we've always said up till now, the safest thing to do is, is, is fund everything a hundred percent or it's self-funded. I don't like the idea of, of doing what a lot of schools have done and saying, we're going to roll the dice and we're going to, you know, start charging a, 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 a paper per, per play fee because it can backfire on you pretty quickly. Um, but, you know, that's the options. So I just think that, that it would be, given that this is, these are conversations that have occurred in fits and starts ever since the school is open, in fact, before the school opened, it might be nice to have a good public forum to have, have some input and then come forward and say, okay, based on the principles that are in play, what should we do in terms of serving our extracurricular program? So I will have some conversations with some folks and put some ideas together on that and hopefully, uh, in late May, come back with, with some proposals and get your thoughts on that. Does that make sense?
You might also want to look at it from a Title IX perspective.
Yes, absolutely.
Because I believe we're a bit skewed to the boys right now.
Yeah, if there were an next sport to add, it would probably be girls lacrosse, quite honestly.
I, I'm just saying even to look what you have now because you have football as boys only, boys, freshman basketball. You do have girls volleyball, but then ice hockey, if you consider bringing that as a sport and wrestling, which they do allow co-ed, but is ninety-five percent plus male, you're looking at, at three extra sports or...
Is that because the girls didn't demand for a particular sport or just they, they just are not interested in, say...
Part of the problem is we're, we're kind of maxed out in terms of so many kids, I mean, we have a lot of kids who are three and two season athletes and it's just difficult to field more teams than we can right now. Uh, so part of it is, I, I think, is demand.
We don't want to make a girls lacrosse team happen when they're happy with what we've got going right now.
But I'm just saying you have to be aware that we're out of balance and it's, it's a two-pronged thing. It's offerings, you have to have equivalent offerings and then you have to have equivalent expenditures, roughly equivalent expenditures. So if you've got a very expensive girls sport, that might, well, you might be in compliance on the cost side, but not on the, the offering side. And you offer it, it doesn't, you have to offer it. If, if five girls show up to play, um, softball and you can't field a softball team, you offered it, but you have to then watch your expenditures to make sure you're not out of whack. And all it takes is somebody to come in and say, you know, I think you're out of whack. They go to the federal government and then Title IX people descend on you with more scrutiny you probably want.
Um, can we just go back to the Business Administrators Report? One of the things that was in there was a warning of the, um, athletic trainer contract. We received, we put out an R F P, solicited bids, and in the end, we only received one valid response that met the criteria that was issued. So that was the, the basis of the decision was essentially, we could only find one person or one, one organization that responded and met the criteria that were stipulated in the R F P. Um, and it was that, uh, the recommendations were excellent and the cost was significantly lower, so...
Was it the same firm we're using now?
No. Probably less money. The vendor we use now did respond. Uh, they were asked to respond with a fixed price. They didn't. They responded with an hourly rate, so technically they didn't meet the R F P. What I did do, however, is I took the estimated hours that we gave them. I multiplied it by the rates they gave us and they were not even the low, even, even giving them that, they weren't the low bidder. And the winning vendor offered a lot more services. Our current vendor has one athletic trainer on staff. The, the one, it's not a line of business form, so there was always an issue if, if that athletic trainer wasn't available getting a substitute. The, the vendor that actually submitted the winning proposal, it is a line of business form. And we checked with Bishop Gerton, Bedford...
Goffstown.
And Goffstown. Um, and not only did they get excellent references for the services they provided, but all three of them said they never had to worry because if there was an issue with their A team not showing up, there was a replacement right there for them.
Now, is the present, um, trainer going to go, to try to go to work for this thing or is that...
That would be his decision. They do have to hire an athletic trainer to assign to us.
So we'd be assigned a trainer to those, would it be consistent person?
Pardon?
We'd be assigned a trainer to those, would it be a consistent person?
Yeah, that's what they do. They'll hire, uh, an athletic trainer and assign it to you, but of course their staff would then back that person up. And I did suggest to John that he might want to let our current athletic trainer know they may be looking to hire someone, but that clearly is a decision.
And we would certainly be willing to offer very good references. But that's the story behind the decision.
Um, policy G B E B D, is this, I think I asked already, is this, do we need approval or is it for reference?
Where are we, Michelle, with that?
He had asked us to go back for something.
This is the second draft, I think. You had it come back from, um, you got some input from teachers and, and staff members on this?
Yep.
But you wanted to address community outreach with this as well?
Well, um, Sean McDonough was going to take it to... Well, Sean McDonough was gonna take it to the Student Council, thank you, for feedback, and I've not heard back from Sean if that's happened or not. We did send it out to all staff at all three buildings, had some good comments. Most of the comments actually had to do with the procedures, which really talk about, on the second page, those were drafted by Kyle, and then we sent them to our internal group. The situation really is that right now, we have what's described in the procedures, the sort of Facebook page is happening, but they're typically coordinated by a parent, so therefore, it's not the school. So it's happening, but it's not, there's no oversight, you know, if that manager has their kid graduate or move, then there's a Campbell High School, you know, girls softball page out there that may have images of students on it, that nobody can now, we can't access, we can't anything. And so if you Google, you know, CHS girls softball, you might get three different Facebook pages. That's not ideal. So this is set up to allow us to actually have some control, have some continuity, the school would have the ability to, it would essentially have ownership of, and then we would develop some policies about what's acceptable or not. So right now, we got this sort of shadow Facebook entity out here, that is kinda working, it's the way, you know, all of your travel soccer teams and travel softball teams run things with a Facebook page. But we probably need to be in a different place from that. So we'll see if we can get some feedback from the students, and originally, I indicated that we might wanna add some other policies with this, I think we're better off leaving this as a standalone, but I think we may have to look at a change in the name of the policy, because it deals with communicating electronically with students, but also with the community. So I think I'll look at a name change, we'll give it another read, get the feedback from the high school student council, and finish this, and I think there's a desire on the part of a lot of folks to have us look at cell phone policy, and get some consistency and clarity on that one. And I'm gonna wear my helmet for that conversation.
Does that mean that we would actually activate the system that doesn't block all the electronics in here? Because you can't get anything on your phone.
Oh, that's this room, that's, I can't get him in my office either.
I thought it was-
It's not blocked, it's just-
Oh, it's the building.
It's the structure of the building. The cell signal can't get through the walls.
This room is particularly bad, because you don't have a window that faces the outside.
But we do have a bring-your-own-device policy. We do have a bring-your-own-device policy.
So I take it the second floor is more accessible to phones and stuff in this building?
And near windows and doors.
And near windows and doors?
I see more kids walking with their hands in their hoodie pockets upstairs than I do downstairs.
Yeah, I think it's great that they can actually type with their, with it in their hoodie.
I thought maybe it was just colder up there, and they were, you know.
It doesn't really matter, you need to heat the upstairs a little bit more, right?
The adults are the only ones who know that there is a back button on your phone. Students know.
Well, they know it's there, they just choose not to use it.
If the school board wanted to create, or the district wanted to create a Facebook page to help get information out, would we have to abide by this?
We wouldn't have to, because we can do whatever.
We have a rule that says we can violate all our rules. Just so when we think we are in trouble, we can say, we're running back to this rule.
It depends on what Dr. Cochran means, you're okay if it's, policy is with students.
Yeah.
That's true, yeah.
Well, unless a student, oh, I'm gonna go there.
Because I think I've mentioned in the past, but I think it would do us well to find some way of-
I think the chairman should be tweeting too.
It's funny, because the district website is not user-friendly. Like the SAU office, I'm sure that it would take you a week to find out who the superintendent is. Now, that's maybe not a bad thing.
Well, people just aren't in the habit of going there and saying, oh, is there a meeting this week, and we go find the agenda. You need to go on Facebook, or Twitter, or email or something, and push it to them, otherwise, they're just not gonna find you.
Push technology is a much better way to go in many places, many cases.
A lot of districts have done that. In fact, a lot of superintendents have their own blogs.
There we go.
Derek, you can create a Facebook page now, there's no policy that says you can't.
I'd like to just do it on my own, I'd want the board, you know, to be behind doing it.
I would gladly-
I'll make a motion to put Derek's project on a Facebook page.
And our Twitter account.
And Twitter account, and blog account.
I would happily do it if the board wanted to do it, I think, anything to get more information out there would be good. And the town's been doing a good job with it, and people seem to be receptive to us.
I think it takes, you know, the town has two IT guys, both Jason and John Bernal, they both, you know, live and breathe this stuff daily, so I would never volunteer for that process. But, you know, if you are all for it, I don't, I don't think it's a bad thing to get information out, and get a website, get a Facebook liked by members of the community.
What do we wanna call it, the Litchfield School Board, Litchfield School District, or?
I guess, where are we coming from, the district or the board?
One of the, is a good question. The other thing is, do we have really a functional district, centralized district calendar, that people can go to with any reliability? And I think the answer is probably no. While we may have, I mean, it's a very fluid thing, that might be one of the better things to invest in, if we have some additional capacity.
Well, I can manage a Facebook page, I can't manage a calendar.
Michelle needs to manage the calendar.
I would also recommend we have Kyle set up a specific email address to open that account, so that it doesn't get tied to you personally, just in case, if now you decide you don't wanna do it.
True.
He doesn't have a choice. We'll need to reopen that board responsibility. Chairman is responsible for-
That's it. We added some stuff to the vice chair, now we just gotta add some stuff back into the chairs.
Okay, okay, we'll talk to Kyle Buck and email address then. Which actually reminds me too, it would be nice too, if we had just a public school board email address, so they don't have to go to five different forms to fill out, meaning enough of the board. Maybe Kyle will do that.
Yes.
Well, we had discussed having the school board one that's internal opened up.
Do I keep that one internal? Do I keep that one internal, or?
Why does it matter?
I don't know if it does matter, maybe it doesn't.
I mean, you click on it, it's only gonna go to us five, no matter who clicks on it, they're only gonna be sending to, I mean, I think, I think you should, we should look, if we're gonna make something public, we should make sure that superintendent schools is probably on that distribution list also.
That's a good point.
Because you should not, you should be getting any information that we're getting, I would think.
What if they're complaining on here?
The system's important now, they have to log in, and they don't get my email address, it comes from the, you know, yeah.
I mean, he could just, he could just add a, an option to email the entire board, whether it sends it to everyone individually, or to the one address, it doesn't matter.
Any questions on the manifest?
I asked Steve where we parked our tank.
We have a tank?
We had a tank repair, figured we had to have a tank. He told us an oil tank, took out the front.
It's out in the shed down back, with the football uniforms.
Protecting them.
All right then, I guess at this point then, let me bring it up, so can we get, we'll be entering, oh, I'm sorry, any more public input? Kathy?
I just pulled the game out.
I hear we're great if you wanna go to sleep. Non-public session, at this point, we're going to a non-public session under RSA 91-8311, the dismissal, promotion, or competition of any public employee, or the disputing of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him, unless the employee affected, one, has a right to a meeting, and, two, requests the meeting be open, in which case, the request shall be granted, b, the hiring of any person as a public employee, c, matters if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person, other than a member of the body or agency itself, unless such person requests an open meeting.
Second?
Second, yeah.
Hi.
Hi, hi, hi.
I was sleeping.
Don't trip over this, please.
I won't.
We're not off yet.
Let's knock the square again.
He's gonna turn it off again.